Good evening. I'd like to call the March fourteenth, twenty twenty-three Planning Commission meeting to order. The Planning Commission is holding hybrid meetings. Members of the public can attend the meeting in person or observe the meeting on Zoom, on access Humboldt Channel ten, online by visiting www dot city of Arcata dot org and following the live meetings link at the bottom of the city's homepage, or on the city's YouTube channel. If you are attending remotely, please be aware that the Zoom feed provides the closest to real-time stream. If you rely on the other feeds and you wish to make comments, please be aware of the time lag on those feeds. The first item on our agenda is the land acknowledgement. The City of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as gudene, meaning over in the woods or among the redwoods. Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives of settler colonialism. Next, we have the roll call. But before we do the roll call, I just want to say and give other commissioners a say, opportunity to share their views. I'm very sorry that we're losing Julie, have lost Julie as our chair and commissioner. I appreciate her friendship and mentorship and the many, many long years she spent working for Arcata.
Thank you, Scott. Well said. We miss you, Julie.
Miss you very much, Julie, and thank you for everything you've done for the commission over the years.
Julie was incredibly welcoming when I joined, and I really appreciated that. Roll call? Okay, Commissioner Mayor?
Here.
Commissioner Simmons?
Here.
Commissioner Tagney?
Here.
And Vice Chair Davies?
Here.
We're joined tonight by Community Development Department staff, looks like Director David Loyah, and Joe Matier, and both senior planners, Joe Matier and Dilo Freitas. Next, we have oral communications. During this time, people may make comments about items that are not on the agenda. If you have comments about items that are listed on our agenda for tonight, please hold them until the commission opens public comment on those items. At the end of oral and written communications, commissioners may respond to commenters. Any requests that requires commission action may be set by the commission for a future agenda or referred to staff. I will start with those in the room, then we'll hear from those on Zoom. Please line up now if you wish to speak. I'd like to get a sense for how many oral communications we have. Please line up behind the lectern. If you are on Zoom and wish to make oral communications on matters that are not on tonight's agenda, please raise your hand by selecting the raise hand icon on the right side of your screen, or by pressing star nine if you are calling in by Zoom. For those on Zoom, when it is your turn to speak, the clerk will unmute you. Each speaker will have three minutes to comment. Those in the room may track their time using the clock on the dais. Recognizing that speakers on Zoom may not see the timer and may not be able to tell when the three minutes have lapsed, I apologize in advance if your comment is interrupted at three minutes. And just quickly, before we get started with this, I want to acknowledge that there was some notifications about land use designation changes. David, did you want to speak to that briefly before we start comment?
Yeah, sure. The Planning Commission meeting tonight was notified, we notified all of the owners of properties who have land use designation changes by mail. And we do have some folks in the audience tonight who received those mailers, and I just wanted to acknowledge that because of the structure of the meeting and the change that was made by the city council recently, that we're unlikely to get into too much depth and substance about those changes tonight. Do want to strongly encourage folks to reach out to staff in advance to learn about the potential changes to their property, and, you know, would encourage them to do that before the meeting, at which we do have substantive discussions about those.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Is this on? There we go. I am going to give an update on the petition for the linear park. I think this stands alone enough that it's not really a direct item, and hope you can agree on that. I appreciate the moment. Thank you. Hello to commissioners and staff. My name is James Becker. I've been working with community members to circulate the petition for L Street pathway to become a linear park, and the language is as follows. We support an existing L Street bicycle pedestrian pathway to be officially designated as a linear park from Alliance Road to Samoa Boulevard, and this linear park to be reserved and enhanced as a green space for recreation, play, and community. We also support the spoken recommendation from the Chair of Arcata Transportation Safety Committee, August second, twenty twenty-two meeting. Revised the circulation plan that eliminates L Street as being considered for new streets and car traffic. This area is recommended to become a car-free linear park that prioritizes people. I wish to provide an update on the petition for the designation of L Street Rails with Trails corridor as a linear park, a linear park that relies on open spaces and the right-of-way of the existing railroad corridor to best serve Arcata's future infill, the Greater Humboldt Bay Area, and the Great Redwood Trail and beyond. Signers include previous city council members and mayors, business members, architects, members of the local Sierra Club North Group, a broad spectrum of customers visiting the co-op, including out-of-town visitors, community members of all ages, including Cow Polly students, signers from neighborhoods around Arcata. The online petition are close, the online petition signatures are close to a hundred, including primarily Arcata residents. Many have walked the path and understand what will be permanently lost by paving over the open spaces. They also appreciate what is possible by utilizing those open spaces for a linear park. I don't want to take up too much more time tonight, but I do want to take up a little bit of space in the chamber. And with that said, I want to update you on the petition. At present, there are five-hundred-and-fifty-three signers. This represents one signature line. This is about six signature lines. And I'm going to just take the rest of my time to unscroll this for the signatures, and there are a total of five-hundred-and-fifty-three. I have no time left. Go a little faster. It's a lot of signatures, sorry. Anyway, thank you for your time, and please take that into consideration that a lot of folks do support it, and they did give a lot of positive input on it. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments, James. Thank you.
Good evening. I'd like to address those cards that David was just talking about. I'm kind of a little surprised that in the past, when cards like that have gone out, they've been pretty precise on what informing homeowner is exactly what's going to go on with construction. And you've done this in the past pretty well. So I look at it kind of as a very vague kind of a card, and they weren't here last week, but Judith pointed out that there was big changes from the state of California that has nothing to do with state of, with Arcata from the standpoint that you could have six units on your property and your neighbor could have six units. And some, some of our commissioners actually felt that that wasn't enough, that we should change your land use from low density to high density. So that could mean that you have the potential to put a four-story dwelling on your, your single-family lot, or your neighbor could. So that should have been like spelled out a little bit clearer in these, in these notices that went out. It's, it was very kind of generic how it was put, and, and it felt, I feel, in a way that, you know, it's not going to catch somebody's attention if you worded it the way that I did. So I have an issue with that. So, and I also have an issue from the standpoint of last week, how, you know, something like North Town is presented as sort of like a wealthy area that somebody's going to actually tear down the single-family house and put a mansion there. I mean, I think a better example of that is, is Los Angeles, like Santa Monica. I've been there like six months ago. You go into a single-family neighborhood, you see like a builder's sign, you see, you know, the architect work they're going to do, and they're going to put this mammoth house on a single-family house. And that kind of example is not going to happen in North Town. North Town is, is basically probably a poorer area, the fact that you can see all those single-family houses back in the seventies. It's called the Secretary of Interior Standards, and maybe some of you need to be more aware of that. But the transition to commercial happened because those were going to be torn down because people just didn't have the money to upkeep that. And that's what we're seeing now. So from the standpoint of kind of using some of these scenarios, why we want to change neighborhoods and not looking at it in that content, I find that's totally unwise and unacceptable. And also from the standpoint of, you know, you're making these decisions, so maybe we should, if that's how you feel, maybe we should open up the neighborhoods that you live, and everything is walking distance. I mean, people that make decisions have a tendency to not include their neighborhoods in the decision-making, and it generally affects poorer neighborhoods. So I have, I have problems with this, and they need to be addressed. And I will bring this up later in the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Patricia Campianica, and I'm going to cede my time to Fred Weiss.
Thank you. Commissioners, I want to thank Julie Visade Alcock for her great service. She was on the Planet Commission for a total of fourteen years in two segments. I greatly anticipate we're with the new format here in this commission that we're going to be moving forward, and I thank staff and Vice Chair Davies for initiating these changes. I'd like to know whether we think we're going to be discussing the circulation element in the vision statement this evening or not, if that could be answered. I'm going to be blunt about something. I fully anticipate there's going to be a lawsuit about the Gateway Plan, and for a variety of reasons. But my encouragement to the commission and staff is to act in as straightforward a fashion as possible. I could be more explicit in a letter. There have been numerous violations of Brown Act and state law. All this would provide a toehold for in the event of a, of a lawsuit. You've heard me say I'm not in favor of a lawsuit. I think it'd slow things down, but any case. It is not your issue, but you may want to be curious to know that the mayor, the vice mayor, and Council Member White did not at all understand that these Form Base Code meetings were being canceled. There is a real disconnect in understanding. They, I spoke with them, and they were surprised. I'm in favor of the cancellation because it means more work can get done. I'd like to know whether the March eighteenth study session is going to have, planning to have either audio or video recordings. I'd like to know that so that I can make an audio or video recording. Right now, there's three different calendars of events. It'd be nice if there's a single calendar that can be done in the next few weeks, I'm sure. I'd like, in the general plan update, are certain elements considered to be complete? Did we complete the growth element? Did we get through all of Commissioner Mayor's points? Could we get a table that shows where we are in the progress of the Gateway Plan and the general plan? What chapters and elements are believed to be completed, or what we're going to be looking at? From my point of view, there's been not a single chapter or element that has been actually completed. But I'd like to see that, a table of that. There's been no discussion, there's, there's, in the format that I see at this point, there's a lot of detail, but some of the larger issues have never been talked about. We talked about realigning the district boundaries, whether that's going to be on the table. Former Chair Visade Alcock requested that the Creamery regard as a separate district. Playhouse Arts Group suggested that in April, signed by twenty-three people. That was ignored. Commissioner Mayor suggested making everything south of Eighth Street be a separate district. In case, there's a Coastal Commission adverse ruling on that. Are we giving up discussion about homeownership opportunities, affordable housing, meeting with contracts from developers, or are these things that we could do between July and December during that period when the ER is in process? The, if we had a sense that a lot of what is being done now is to get things moving, to get the IR going, but a lot of this, we'll come back and revisit some of these things, I think the public would be much more satisfied. As it is, it feels like we've been going ten miles an hour for a year, and now we're going ninety miles an hour. I feel a lot is going to be lost or ignored. You've done a whole lot of work in the last year, and I don't know if it's been adequately recorded. The Wendy Ring of Transportation Safety Committee in the last meeting said, "We took a position on L Street couplet. It doesn't seem to have made any difference, so I'm wondering. We could do a lot of work and try to rewrite the circulation element. Is it going to make any difference? Can someone educate me about the process?" I think it'd be worthwhile to go through the actual process of committee input, where it goes. Does it go through the Planning Commission, or does it go directly to the city council in a final draft plan? There's also the very real situation that the quote "table of other considerations" that came from other committees and the public, things that don't agree with the draft plan, I regard as horribly incomplete and also dismissive. There've been dozens of comments, maybe hundreds, that are not in this table. It also doesn't include anything that's come out of this commission. There's no real record of what this commission has talked about in the last year. Sometime, I think back in May, Commissioner Mayor requested that if you, notes on a particular item were come back at this subsequent meeting. That was never done. I have been talking to some people about going through every single video of the last year and writing down all the times. There've been all kinds of great suggestions and things like, "That will be taken care of in the Form Base Code," or, "We need to make sure we include this." I'd like to see them included, or, as I mentioned earlier, regard this initial draft as something that will be altered during the July to December period. The request of staff that all documents have an actual title and an actual date, possibly version number is optional. Without a date, a viewer has no idea whether what they're looking at is current or earlier than what they've got. And is there a version of the circulation element that has marked-up revisions with input from the committees? Thanks very much.
Thanks for your comments, Fred. Do we have commenters online?
We do have one commenter online, and I'll take the opportunity to mention that this is for items that are not on the agenda. Go ahead, Jane.
Good evening, Commissioners, and it would be helpful if we could have some idea of when our three minutes is coming up. So if you could give me a thirty-second warning, I'd appreciate it. Thank you very much. I have several comments to make. First of all, I want to say we're going to miss Julie an enormous amount, and I'm so sorry she isn't going to be able to continue. First comment, it would be useful to have the March tenth memorandum to the Planning Commission regarding the newly proposed decision-making process included both in the agenda for discussion and in the packet so the public could be informed and comment. It arrived as a done deal or a mandate. This is going to happen. It's not clear that it's going to be any discussion of that at all. Yes, we need an expedited process. On the other hand, it would be nice to have had the public know about that. Two, there's no mention of public comment period either during the various different items being discussed or afterward, at least not on the agenda. And in my opinion, that's a serious emergency in terms of public process. So I presume it's going to happen. But if we wait till the very end of all the discussion, of all those options you're going to go through, you're not going to get any feedback until you've already made decisions, assuming you're making decisions tonight. As I requested at the February twenty-eighth meeting, in order to address the L Street choices, of which you've given three, I think it is necessary to lay out a visual representation of what L Street would look like, either as a one-way street or as a linear park with surrounding building options. I think that would make it easier for both the P, Pub Planning Commission and the public to visualize each option and make an informed decision. None of the current three options presented accurately represent the Transportation Safety Committee's recommendation. And I think you should invite them in, perhaps, to talk to you about that, since that is a very vital piece of this discussion. Thank you very much. I had also recommended, of course, that last time, that the Creamery District be considered a separate district, comparable to the Plaza, comparable to various other locations you designated, because it is a vital center for public activity.
Thirty seconds, Jane.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Good luck with this. And I would also like to know if you're going to handle all those lists of issues tonight. And I don't think enough of the issues were included, by the way. I also agree with almost everything Fred said. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Before, is that it for commenters? I'd like staff to respond to a few comments that were made this evening, but I can speak to Jane's just to say that our plan for this evening is to speak at length about the new meeting format. So it's not a done deal. It's something we're going to take up this evening. I wanted to just get an update on, or give you a chance to give an update on our March eighteenth meeting, since there was a question about that. Additionally, the question of whether we were going to tackle circulation this evening, and then if, if staff could speak to the question of the L and K Street couplet amounting to a pathway there being quote "permanently lost."
Sure. So the circulation element is in the packet tonight with the intent that the Planning Commission has the materials. You know, I'm doubtful that we'll get into too much substance, and I'm highly doubtful that we'll get to the circulation element. In terms of the March eighteenth session, the, I've, I've been apprised recently that we will not have a quorum, so the March eighteenth session is going to be, you know, we'll vacate that, that meeting date, and we'll talk a little bit as we get into the, the process in the, under the agenda item, whether and how to replace that. And then, I'm sorry, the K and L Street question is whether...
There was a question as to whether the Ellen, creating a couplet between L and K Streets would amount to a pathway on L Street being quote "permanently lost."
Oh, absolutely not. No, the L Street does include, the L Street designs does include the, the pathway in the current designs. And I can address those in more detail if you want, under the items.
Thank you. Would any other commissioners like to respond to any comments this evening?
I just wanted to find out if they...
I think, I think we're okay. Yeah. Thank you.
I believe you put that schedule on the wall. I have a lot to say about some of the comments that came up tonight. I'd prefer to do it when those items are properly agendized. And I, I do hope that that's how we proceed in the future.
Thank you. No further comments. We'll move now to the consent calendar. Items on the consent calendar are considered routine and are adopted in one motion without discussion. If anyone would like to discuss an item, it will be removed from consent and considered under item four on our agenda. We have two consent calendar items tonight. They are Consent Calendar A, Approve Planning Commission Minutes from our regular meeting, February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three, and B, Adopt PC two-three-dash-zero-one, A Resolution of the City of Arcata Planning Commission, Finding Updates to the Twenty Twenty-Three, Twenty Twenty-Four Capital Improvement Program Conform to the Arcata General Plan. Would any member of the commission or public like to remove an item? Would any member of the Commission or public like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
Yeah, I'd like to remove PC 23-01.
Okay. Do we have a motion to adopt the remainder of the consent calendar?
I move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Would you please, Commissioner Tangney, address the reason you removed this from the consent calendar?
Yeah, briefly, staff, it's just a little confusion about the short list. I know that we've been exposed to a much longer list in the past of capital improvement product, projects, and at least the ballpark I know was previously on that list, and I'm just wondering if this short list is items that are targeted for this fiscal year for sure, or if they're considered somehow just new items for the capital improvement list or what? I'm just confused.
Yeah, yeah, thank you for that. We have, in the past, brought forward the entire list of all the items that are on the capital improvement program. And then, in the last couple of years, we've tried to clean that process up. The last year, I believe it was, we brought forward two tables, one with new items, one with the existing items, and the intent there was to ensure that everything had been viewed and brought into conformance in case there were outstanding issues. And now, the Engineering Department has brought forward only the new capital improvement projects. I think the ballpark that we reviewed previously was a different project than this one. So I think that's why it's on here again.
So these are considered new projects that never made it on the previous capital improvement list? Okay.
Exactly. Yeah, so we're just finding, finding those in conformance and then adding them to the overall project list. So that's, that's exactly what's going on.
Okay. And are these projects slated for construction this year or funding this year or anything like that? Or is that...
I, I can't give you the update on whether they'll be funded this year. I think some of these, we do have funding for. Some of them are still outstanding, but we have to get the projects on the list as soon as we, you know, conceive of them so that we can continue to procure the funding, do the engineering design and that sort of thing.
All right. Thanks for the clarification.
Given that, does anyone want to make a motion or Judith?
I'd like to comment on that as well. And I'll, and I'll note that I did discuss this with Dan before the meeting. I think it's really important that we see the entire capital improvement program rather than just a couple of projects added to the list, because in fact, what we're supposed to be doing is to review the capital improvement program, which is not just the new items on it. At some point in the next few months, we're, we're probably going to have at least three planning commissioners out of seven who will not have seen a previous list and may not even know where to find it. We might even have some planning commissioners who've never read the complete general plan and so would not be in a position to say whether these projects are consistent with the plan as a whole, beyond noting that they don't seem to be opposed to one or two policies that are mentioned here. So I, I think that giving us the entire list is a way more appropriate approach. I understand that you're trying to clean the process up. I really liked last year having two lists, the entire list and the new list. That actually is a capital improvement program overall that we can speak to. And I'd also like to point out that one thing a list like this says nothing to is something about proportionality. On this list, we have $1 million being sought for improvements to the ballpark. My, my direction pointer is a little off, but I can see the lights right over there, which is empty most of the time and for which most of us have to pay an admission to get in. We're also being told about the very many recreational things that we can't do in town for lack of $1 million. And while I don't doubt that diverse recreational opportunities would include a ballpark in very good shape, it, it would be great not to use that then as an excuse not to be equally vigorous in funding the things that would allow us to actually use Carlson Park, for example, for recreational purposes, which might include providing appropriate locations for the people now camped there to have some shelter and allow us to use the park for which we have already paid. So I, I, I would approve this now, but I, in the future, would love to see the whole program and to open up some of those discussions about the proportions that we see in our search for funds for capital improvements. I'd also really like to see information on there about where we expect funds to come from, for items for which the city is speaking, is seeking funds, and there have been times in the past when that's been included in that list, and I found it super, super helpful.
Can staff, David, can you speak to that? Is that something that you can easily put together, or is that going to be a separate
You know, I think that the staff put together a capital improvement program list for this resolution that we believe meets the intent of the, the law. If there are other items that the Planning Commission wants to see on that capital improvement program list, or if you want to see, as we did last year, a separate, you know, table with all of the items that are on the list, some of those are going to take more work than others. Some of the funding sources, we don't have. I'm not sure this is the appropriate place to have lengthy policy discussions about why one thing's getting funded versus another, but those are all matters that the, you know, the Commission can, can weigh in on.
Judith, did you, did I catch you saying that you're comfortable approving this, but would like to see more detail in the future?
Yes, that's, that is true. And, and an ideal would be something like we had a few years ago, again, with all of the information that we should consider for the entire capital improvement program. And at, at the times when funding sources were actually identified or potential funding sources, that was, that was even more helpful, I think, to the public and to the Commission.
Given that, does anyone want to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to adopt PC-23-01.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item on our agenda is public hearings. We have none. We will move to business items. We have two business items tonight. First, consider administrative actions, including electing Chair, Vice Chair, and considering special meeting times. Can we begin with a staff report, please?
Yeah, I'll keep it exceedingly brief. With just Julie Vassad Elcox's resignation, she was functioning as our Chair, we now need to elect a Chair and Vice Chair for the remainder of the fiscal year. Annually, at the beginning of the fiscal year, we elect Chair and Vice Chair, so we'll be doing that again in July. The other matter that's on this agenda topic is to consider moving the Planning Commission meetings up a little bit, starting them at five, for instance, so that there's more time earlier in the day for Planning Commission deliberations, so we don't have such late meetings. I'd be happy to help with any process questions that you have, but, you know, Chair and Vice Chair is typically appointed through, you know, motion, second, and a vote. The, likewise, the action to adjust the times temporarily would be a motion, second, and a vote. And I will point out that we should take public comment on, on this item. We failed to do so on the last.
Got it. Thank you for that. And I will open public comment now if anyone would like to comment on either of these items.
On the time, it would have been helpful to have a idea of, that you're talking about 5 o'clock in the agenda packet, because I didn't know whether you're talking about 4 o'clock or 3 o'clock or, or anything. 5:30 is okay. 5 o'clock is pushing it a little bit, in, in my opinion. It becomes difficult for people with regular jobs or people who have children to attend the, at least the beginning of the meeting. It's a bit of a moot point, as there's not much public involvement currently, but there could be in the future, especially as things develop. The, that said, I am very much in favor of recognizing the support that, having a productive meeting, so I'm not against having it at 5 o'clock. I do want to remind the Commission, as I said earlier, that going back to the possibility of a lawsuit, you want to avoid anything that has the appearance of limiting public involvement, so 5 o'clock is one thing. Earlier than 5, I think, becomes a little problematic. In terms of the Vice Chair, it's not a large role, as we know, but it can lead to a person being Chair. My own suggestion is that a person be Vice Chair have at least a year of experience on the Commission. And I know that, that limits it to some people, but that's my feeling. Thanks very much.
Thank you for your comments.
I'd also like to address the aspect of the public. What we sometimes forget, and I think on the pyramid, on the city site, is it's not the Planning Commission, it's not the City Council, it's not our leaders that are on the top, it's the public that's supposed to be on number one. And I'm just, for someone that's been participating in this, I feel that aspect of it's been sliding. Perhaps it's sliding with issues like writing letters and, you know, you think that they should go in the agenda package. That would be a logical thing from the standpoint, here it comes out on a Friday, the public has a chance to respond, maybe they can't make it here. You know, it gets, it's not that hard with Adobe Acrobat to put comments in a package, maybe on Monday, so you could actually see what the public has to say, so they don't have to be here. There always seems to be excuses why that can't happen, but I don't know, I took a dull education class a decade ago and it's called Adobe Acrobat Pro, and you can easily, you know, leave some instructions so you can use their software and get rid of the person's information that's private and make that, because that would actually get a lot more people involved. And so it's been very disappointing, because I've actually sent them a number of letters that are, especially even tonight's topic, and somehow, you know, maybe they'll show up in a month or two months and three months, and, you know, I was kind of a little annoyed that, you know, two of our Commissioners basically got their information up there, which I don't, I don't want to limit their free speech, but it's interesting that I had a similar subject matter and it was not put into the agenda, so that's one of my examples. Just even this letter that came out between David and Scott, you know, again, it's an example. Where, where is the public in that? You know, it's sort of like this timetable, but it's not, not mentioning the public at all participating in it. And it's just been this from the start, I wasn't involved in the start, but it's always felt like this kind of top-down process that, you know, kind of like wants the public involved, but, you know, not too much, so that you're, we get too big of a crowd, you know, complaining about things. It just, it just has that feel to it that you're not trying too hard to really get the public in there, you just want a lot of surveys and information, and, and those are based on a really small percentage of the population. We've got 18,000 people here, and, you know, what is it, 10s, 20s that you get, and that doesn't represent the city at all. And even this card issue, I brought this up a year ago, why don't you send out a card to everybody in the city to notify about the gateway? And you pan that, but it's okay when you're, this last issue.
Thank you for your comments.
Since I did it earlier, I did want to thank Julie for her service. She's definitely a great, understanding person. And I think on the subject of Chair and Vice Chair, I'm learning this as I go along, but I'm pretty sure it seems like seniority plays into getting to be Chair, and you go through rotations, and then Vice Chair. I think I'm in agreement with Fred that experience should, and seniority should give you a chance, and I know he's not here, and I don't know if, I, I feel like Christian could just, you know, fit in that role of Vice Chair. I don't have anything else. I know there's three people up there qualified that have, I think, been Chair at one time just from following past meetings, and, and that would just be my pitch at this point, and give everybody time to have some experience and then move on to the ranks with the time of their seniority. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Anybody online?
We do have one online. Go ahead, Jane.
Me again. I agree with Fred's comments and Jim's then on seniority and experience being very critical to being in these positions of responsibility. What was wonderful about Julie is that she had years and years of experience, and that's showing up with Fred, who formerly, years ago, was on the Planning Commission, so he knows what he's talking about most of the time. And I think that's an important element here. So I hope you will take that into consideration in who is recommended and approved as Chair and Vice Chair. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We have no other public comments. I will note at this time as well that, you know, Peter sends his regards from Hawaii, but he also took the time to draft a letter to address some of the items that were on the agenda tonight. I've handed each of you one of those, and there's a stack of them here if anybody's interested in the public in reading those. He does address the Chair and Vice Chair nomination on that letter.
Meeting is now closed for public comment. Can we now take up the matter of electing Chair and Vice Chair? Does anyone have a motion or anything to add to the discussion?
I'd like to nominate you, Scott, as Chair and Daniel as Vice Chair.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. I'd also like to take up the matter of starting the meetings earlier, and before we do, I just want to say that my perspective on this is that when our leading, when our meetings get late, they get less productive. When any of us get tired, we're less productive. We have a lot to do. The City Council has given us a crisp timeline that we should try to adhere to, and my sense is that if we could start at 5 o'clock, I do understand the impact on Commissioners and the public, but I think it would allow us to have a longer meeting and still perhaps stay within that productive zone, but I'm interested to hear what other Commissioners have to say.
Is this an item that we're going to try to resolve right now? I'm fine with that.
Yes, we're looking for a motion, and these would be special meetings that would last through our June-July report to the City Council.
I, I have a chill boss that would let me off and get here at 5, but I understand that members of the public might not, and so I would just suggest like 5:10 or 5:15 as a starting point, really just to post work commute sort of thing.
Got it. Judith?
For the first several years I was on the Planning Commission, we started at 7. That gave me time to actually eat some food after I got out of work at 5, which allowed me to be fairly productive into that later meeting. I do not think we should move the meetings to any time before 6. People who have job jobs will have trouble getting here at that time, possibly including myself. And I, I think that your practice of cutting meetings off before 9 can probably serve the meeting productivity issue pretty well. And so I suggest that we keep the meeting times as they are, perhaps prescribing that if a meeting goes over two hours, we have a break sometime in the middle.
Okay. Dan?
Yeah, I'm fine with 5, but I super respect the people that can't get here on time, including the public, so I think it's a very legitimate concern. time, including the public. So I think it's a very legitimate concern. I'm fine with going later, too. And I, although I do struggle with that, we do feel less productive the later it goes, so.
And do you feel that five-thirty would be too burdensome?
I feel that six is a great time, and I'd like to keep it there.
I will say that I do think somewhat earlier would be better, because we, I mean, the Commission often gets to about eight-thirty or nine, and then it feels like we're not able to make decisions that late. And then, hopefully, with an earlier meeting, we could, you know, eat dinner at, like, at, you know, seven-thirty or eight, right? It's like, at, you know, I don't know. I, I hear what you're saying, though. I understand.
Does anyone have a motion they want to make regarding this matter?
I move that we keep the meetings as they are until further notice, including the presence of our additional Commission members, at least two of whom are not here, and one of whom we don't know about.
Is there a second for that motion?
I, respecting Judith's position, like the idea of waiting for other Commissioners to weigh in on it. I'd like to hear from them.
I do actually have some feedback on that, if you're interested in knowing the...
Please.
Because I did reach out to, you know, knowing that Christian and Peter weren't going to be here, you know, and anticipating that this, this action might be taken, I reached out to them beforehand. I think Peter addresses it in his, his letter here. Maybe he doesn't address it specifically, actually, but he did tell me in person that he was in favor of moving the meetings earlier in the day. In fact, he'd like that to be a permanent change. And Christian said that he could do five at the very earliest. I'm also getting information from our IT that five-thirty would be the earliest that we could start with IT. So if you did want to amend the, the timeframes, you know, five-thirty might be, you know, appropriate for now.
As early as we can reasonably get.
Yep.
So Christian is on board with five-thirty?
Yeah, he said he could get here at five, if need be, but no earlier.
Still looking for a motion?
We actually had a motion on the table. I think before we have another motion, we should either amend it or vote on it. It sounds, it sounds like it will probably be voted down, but as a matter of process, I think we have to do that.
Did you actually second?
Entertain another motion.
We don't have a second. Would anyone like to second that motion? Motion fails. Would anyone else like to make a different motion?
I'll make a motion for five-thirty.
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second five-thirty.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes. The second business item is to consider a recommendation to the City Council on the general plan updates. Before we begin, I'd just like to say a couple of things to add some context. The City Council has given the Planning Commission specific directions to give them our recommendations on general plan updates, form-based code, and the Gateway Area Plan by, at the latest, I think the date is our July eleventh meeting. And looking at the pace at which we've been moving in our review process, it's clear that we're not going to get there unless we adopt a different structure to how we deliberate and review the materials. I recognize the staff report and additional materials have been out since Friday. I will, would like to open public comment before we hear a staff report, and then I'd like some time, spend some time working on the process that we need to get to a place of consensus. And I will open public comment on this item now, if people could line up at the lectern.
Can I ask why you're asking for public comment before the staff report? That's, that's typically, we typically hear from staff first.
We can get a staff report first. I'm not, yeah, sure. Thanks, Judith. Let's do a staff report, and then public comment.
Okay. We can certainly do that. I think the reason we had initially designed it so that the public could comment first, is because the, the, the meeting format for this meeting is going to be a lot of back-and-forth, and deliberations between staff and the Planning Commission, discussion, that is. And then, the, what I'm anticipating, based on the material that we need to cover, is that there may not be a whole lot of time for, you know, the substantive review. And so this provided the, the public, who have also read through the staff report, and received notice of, you know, the additional materials that we've sent out, even as late as Saturday, that, you know, that those have all been out there, and so the, the public have had a chance to, to review those. Having said that, I am happy to start with the staff report, recognizing that it's going to be, you know, lengthy discussion between Planning Commission and, Planning Commission and the staff. Okay, so with that, I'll go ahead and start. So as Commissioner Davies, Chair Davies, now, mentioned the Council provided this direction here at their last meeting. In short, they said, stop the, the current proposed Form-Based Code scope that we had, the engagements that we had. Instead, focus energy on producing a draft of the Form-Based Code, and then do engagement on that. There are many reasons for that, but I just want to hit the high notes here. They wanted us to produce the draft code as soon as humanly feasible. Our Form-Based Code writer is working on that now, and we anticipate being able to reserve our formerly designated April twenty-second session for the purpose of getting more feedback from the Planning Commission to help guide that, and that that work will be completed by, by June, so that we'll have a draft of that by June at the latest. They asked for, the, the City Council asked for the general plan updates, including the Gateway Area Plan, to have a recommendation by the Planning Commission's first meeting in July, and that they recognize our draft. They'll be in sufficient form to allow us to continue the work. To one of the commenters' questions earlier, there is still the option and opportunity for fine-tuning and honing the language in these documents between the time when you make your recommendation in July, and when they're adopted later this year, or early next year. And then, they, I guess I mentioned this, is that they wanted those to, for you to make that recommendation in July. And so, the, the memo that I sent out, that, that the Chair and I drafted, was an attempt to proactively respond to this hard-fixed deadline. I want to emphasize that this deadline of, you know, June, as the end date for these drafts, has not changed in over a year. Last August, the Council asked us to complete this work by June. In January, the Council asked us to complete this work in June, and at their last meeting, they formally voted, and the members then present said, yes, complete this work by June. So, you know, this is not new direction, it's the existing direction, it's just very formalized. And so what we're hoping to do tonight is to go through the process that will allow us to, you know, come to some agreements about how to get through the material. To that end, we sent out the memo that identified a framework for your deliberations. So we're going to start with the, you know, the process, we're going to kind of build it in real time, as we're working through this material together. And, you know, I just want to acknowledge that this is, you know, going to require us to be pretty disciplined, but I think, once we get used to it, it'll be a hard, a hard transition to get, to get in the form, but once we get used to it, I think it'll help facilitate some of these conversations. We want this, if possible, to be a consensus decision. We want this to be something that everyone feels, you know, that they are participating in willingly, and so one of the first things that we wanted to do before we get into the process piece, is to address the ground rules that we laid out in the memo. Now, again, as the memo says, and I'm not sure where the understanding came from, that this is, you know, a final form that you're just jumping into, the memo clearly states that all of this is negotiable, all of this is, is, you know, terms that you're all agreeing to hold yourselves to. This is a recommendation that we've made, because we think this structure will work, we've seen it tried and tested. But you're going to start with these ground rules, and, you know, the question, my first question, I guess, is that we provided five starting-point ground rules. And, you know, I'd just like to, you know, take a straw poll real quick. Is there anyone who is opposed to incorporating these ground rules to guide your discussions?
Judith?
I am opposed to incorporating these ground rules, although I do see a number of positive aspects of them. Is this the time to bring those up, or shall we?
Absolutely, yeah. If any member wants to propose a change to the ground rules, or, you know, new ground rules, or removal of any ground rule, now's the time to do that. And what we hope to do is to, you know, gain consensus. That's our objective, but at the end of the day, again, you know, you, you run by majority rule.
Okay. And I will note that I did talk about these ground rules with Dan. I also did speak about the March first Council meeting with Kimberly White, formerly of this Commission, now on the City Council, and present at that meeting. There are some really good things about the proposal. I appreciate that the Commission can be more efficient in addressing the general plan issue by issue, and doing it in a concise and efficient manner. I really appreciate the expectation that Commission members would come to the meetings prepared with specific responses to proposals, and that we would be expected to put those things in writing. But we need to recognize that this is a draconian schedule for recommending the adoption of a full general plan update, even though it was on an exploratory schedule perhaps a year or more ago, and supposedly set as a deadline at the March first City Council meeting. Let's understand that a forty-five second limit to making a case for raising an issue with an item in the draft is unprecedented on this Council.
Can, can I just make a quick suggestion? I'm sorry to interrupt, but there, you know, we've broken them down into segments, so that, you know, each of those different segments could be addressed at that, under that time, and it sounds like...
I've broken this down into segments, too, and I'd like to complete what I'm saying.
Okay, I mean...
You asked, you asked if anyone objects. I object. I do it strenuously. I've actually written down why. I understand that not going on and on and on about an issue and monopolizing the conversation is a matter of etiquette between Council members, and also a matter of efficiency. But the kind of filter that is proposed here, with a formal designation of items, and the order in which we're able to address them, is a set of rules that's kind of designed to be broken. It'll result in a weaker plan, a weaker Planning Commission, and basically, a, a pretty oppressive meeting atmosphere. The bicycle analogy would allow the Commission to address upfront, and with priority, anything that Commission members had written down and gotten to staff by ten o'clock Monday morning, on material that we would be receiving sometime Friday afternoon. And please remember that we're up here as volunteers, and that some of us actually have job-jobs. Anything that isn't brought up that way gets relegated to some part of the bicycle analogy, and can be addressed later. But some of those things wouldn't get addressed until the very end of the process. I think that was called the bike rack. At which point, the people who wanted to bring them up would probably have forgotten the details of why, and I wouldn't be surprised if members of the public and staff hadn't forgotten as well. And on this draconian schedule, we probably would never get to those things on the bike rack. I'd also like to point out that I did listen to the recording of that March first Council meeting. On the Council's agenda was addressing the Form-Based Code, and conceivably, the rest of the Gateway Planning Process. Because of that, two members of the Council were not allowed to be in the room, and were not part of that discussion. Addressing the remainder of the general plan update was not on the agenda. Two members of the City Council not only did not participate in that discussion, they weren't even allowed to sit in the room when it was going on. Community Development Director Loya, with whom I discussed this briefly, briefly, yesterday, mentioned that he was quite sure that if it had come up for a vote, the City Council would have, would have voted on that, they would have been in favor. That may be true, but it didn't, and they didn't, and members of the public have not had an opportunity to go through it with them. And I think that that's something that the Commission should be aware of. You're all encouraged, I would strongly encourage you, to listen to that meeting, to listen to exactly what was discussed, and how it was presented. There was a schedule chart that came up on the screen that I saw at home very briefly. Presumably, it was in the City Council's packet, and so they had longer to look at it. It's quite, it's quite possible that some of them may have had in mind that original June-July deadline from over a year ago, and, and thought, yeah, okay. Some of them weren't on the City Council at that time. But if this new approach to efficiency is being driven by a draconian deadline, which I don't believe that the City Council voted to approve at that meeting, and if, and if they did, not all the members were present to do so, if it's being driven by that, I think we should ask the City Council to reconsider what that does to the Planning Commission's process. It doesn't make for a well-thought-out, well-reviewed, and nuanced revision of the plan. And I think we can do a lot better. So... It's great to be efficient. It's really important to move through item by item. It is not great to suppress speech in this room by either the public or members of this Commission.
Thank you, Judith. I appreciate your comments and thoughts, as always. I, I feel the direction from the City Council was one-hundred percent clear, which is that they wanted us to get these recommendations to them by July. I, I appreciate the importance of free speech, and the ability for the public and the Commission to weigh in, but I also think that, that we're bogging down a bit, and I think the City Council's direction for us to finalize our recommendations by July is a response to that. I am aware that we serve... I am aware that we serve at the pleasure of the city council, and I, I think it's important that we do what we can to meet that, meet that deadline that I felt they very clearly expressed. Is your concern primarily that you question whether or not that was the intention of the city council? Because if that's the case, perhaps we could continue our discussion, given what we heard from the city council, and have staff reach out to the city council to confirm that and bring that confirmation back to us at a later meeting or something like that?
Yeah, we absolutely can do that. I've already spoken with the mayor and vice mayor, who affirmed that the interpretation that you see before you on the staff report was fully their intention. They've also confirmed that they can, you know, you know, as necessary, take the action again. But I think the important piece here is, you know, that we commit to completing the work. I want to mention that the reason why we've broken this into different sections is so that we can build an agreement around how to accomplish these goals. To respond 100% to what's been in the draft form and to, you know, reject it as a result of that hasn't given it enough time, enough breathing room for you all to figure out ways to, you know, to improve the process. One of the things that we've been discussing for, you know, the last year and certainly since the beginning of the new year is that there, one way to, to build more time into this process is to have special meetings. If you want to take the additional time to have special meetings, I'm not suggesting that this structure still, or some similar structure, couldn't still benefit those conversations, but that would provide for additional room for, you know, for, for these discussions and time to, you know, to fully explore them. Given that we're not going to have the March 18th meeting, you know, we will make that recommendation when the time comes. We've got a lot of different components. There's a lot of complexity to what we need to discuss tonight, and I think breaking it down into small chunks and discussing them one at a time will be the best use of our time so that we're not, you know, kind of going in circles and, and not resolving on anything. To that end, we wanted to start with the ground rules and make sure that the, the conversations that you're having, that you all agree and concede to some set of rules. And the reason for that is so that if any one of you feels like, you know, the conversation is moving away from those ground rules, we're not accomplishing the goals because we're missing the ground rules, we can all point back to them and say, hey, remember, we agreed to these. Do we want to continue the discussion in the, in the, you know, way that we're going right now? Do we want to, you know, comport with the ground rules? Or do we want to amend the ground rules? And it just gives us a way to make sure that we're accountable to the decisions we've made. So I would encourage you all to refocus on the ground rules and decide, you know, before we get into these, you know, really large picture issues about, you know, how the process might work. Are these, or are there some set of rules that you could agree to, to work with to have your conversations and make them productive?
Thank you. To better understand those ground rules, I have a question, just for clarity. For example, on 318, land use circulation is likely to be the topic of the evening, right? Sorry, circulation, mobility, gateways. So am I to understand here that that means we would be prepared ahead of time by reading this packet and identifying any inconsistencies or problems we have with it? Submit that in writing ahead of time so that there can be some kind of organized structure at the meeting the next Tuesday?
Exactly. Instead of spending time in the meeting, the way it's designed, instead of spending time in the meeting to get the issues on the table, we would do that legwork in advance and then come with a set that you all could look at and say, yeah, that looks like what we want to discuss today, and then move into the discussions around the substantive issues by way of example. So that's what we mean by come prepared to take action. If you didn't, and, and again, this is all flexible, but the way it's currently written, if you didn't do that work ahead of time, you didn't get something to us in time for us to build it into the list, you could still have it added at the meeting. And it could be that, you know, you know, Dan, you come in and you say, you know, I didn't have a chance to add this policy, but I want to add it now. And the commission says, that sounds like a really important policy, let's do that.
Okay. So, so that would just help structure the Tuesday discussion around identified issues that we want to bring up. We would have a, what did it say, two minutes to clearly and concisely kind of go over our items. I guess that means walk the staff and commission through the items that we've highlighted or questions that we've made. And then as a group, vote on whether or not to tweak those items or then maybe just point of discussion. If it needs a vote, straw poll, whatever, we would vote on it and move on. Is that, am I getting it right?
Yes, and, and what I would recommend, again, I'm jumping ahead a little bit into the staff report here, you know, I've got a very detailed description. I understand this is, you know, there's a lot there to comprehend and digest. I want to break it down piece by piece and go into each individual piece with you all to make sure that this makes sense to you. What we should start with is a set of ground rules that will allow us to refer back to, you know, are we willing, if we're willing to do this, are we willing to accept these ground rules? Sounds like you want to get into content. Many of you are jumping there. If you'd like, we can skip the ground rules. Typically, you do this as a starting point so that the conversation we're about to have is also structured around these ground rules. But I'm not hearing a lot of desire to say, yes, I like these ground rules, or add this one or that one. This is usually like a very perfunctory, you know, thing that you do at the beginning of a meeting, so.
I like these ground rules.
I like the ground rules, and I don't think they're too far from what we actually do.
Okay. Matt?
I like the ground rules.
Okay. We're, we're all in support of the ground rules. Let's move forward.
Go ahead.
If there aren't any others, I will add them to the list, Ivana White-style, right now.
Yeah, so what we're going to do is we're actually going to build out the physical representation of the conversation you're having so we can all look at them here tonight instead of editing it onto this. So, Dilo, you've got those, you don't need to look at this, right? Okay, perfect. Moving on from ground rules. Okay, so again, this is helping us to build our agenda, and what we'd like to do is to have an agenda ultimately that has, for each individual meeting, the stated purpose, objectives, et cetera. We're not necessarily going to list the entire method that we'll go through at each of those meetings, but we want to have something that we can look at, like we're doing now, that will help us, guide us. To start, we'd like to start with the purpose. And so again, I'd just like to put this forward as a purpose. For this meeting, our purpose is to develop a recommendation of the council, supported by the majority, if not consensus, of the drafts of each of the general plan elements, the gateway area plan, and the Form Based Code by July 11, 2023. Does that purpose work for everyone? Does anybody have an objection to that purpose?
I object to that purpose. I think that that's an absurdly rushed date to have all those things done, especially given the things that we have spent our time on, like what do we need more information on? For three planning commission meetings and our Form Based Code exercises, which took up several more meetings. I don't think that July 11th allows us a reasonable process to adopt a responsible version of all of those pieces. And I think we should send that message to the city council, who we're here to advise.
Other commissioners? Comfortable with the purpose? Pushback?
I'm comfortable with doing the best we can towards that goal, and I'm always game for the additional meetings that we are trying to schedule.
Matt?
I'm comfortable with the purpose, and I, I would just like to say that it's not just because the city council said that they, I think it's because there's important work that we're doing that needs to get done, and there's a, there's a cost of not completing the work.
Yeah, I think it's easy to lose track of the housing crisis that we're in as our deliberations move on. It sounds like, can we take then maybe a straw poll in favor of the purpose?
Sure.
Were majority comfortable with purpose?
Okay. This, the objectives, you know, are some of the, there's a little bit of overlap maybe in terms of purpose, objectives, and outcomes, but I just want us to be really explicit that the objectives of these, these meetings are to complete the review and provide the recommendation of priority issues, with a particular element at each meeting, holding over minor concerns to later revision, which could be done either at the makeup meetings, if we have them, and/or during the timeframe between when you make your recommendation in July and when the drafts are adopted as finals. Two, to provide discreet, explicit changes in policy. And that's an important key here. I want us to all understand what explicit changes in policy means, and that means like language we're actually looking at and talking about, not just sort of hazy, you know, thoughts about what, what the policy could do.
May I ask a point of clarification?
Please.
The word discreet, does it need to be in there?
Does three need to be in there? Is that the question?
Yeah.
I think if we can work to consensus, that is, you know, our best outcome, recognizing that the, the majority will maybe need to, to rule on some issues. One of the tools that we'll talk about, the gradients of agreement, is a tool that we can use to, to build consensus, even when you're not feeling 100% comfortable with the decision that's being made. You can still concede to, to moving forward on a particular item, so, but, you know, it's up to you all if you want to modify or remove that.
I mean, maybe concise would be a better word than discreet.
Yeah. I just, I guess I don't get the word discreet in that sentence, so I'd vote for change.
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about bullet number three. You're talking about two?
Yeah, the word discreet, its presence, does it need to be there? Could it be more clear, perhaps? Either taking discreet out entirely or a change to concise?
I'm sorry, what was the?
Concise and explicit are redundant.
Okay, there's a proposal for change on the table.
Would it, would it make sense to be explicit about, when you're looking at discreet, explicit changes in policy, to refer explicitly to the draft document that staff has provided us with?
Yeah, I think that's the idea, is that you have specific language that you're proposing as opposed to, you know, I don't like this policy, that's not very concise, and it's not very explicit, it's not very discreet. I'd like you to change this policy to read thusly. Here's my track changes version.
I'd like you to refer to the draft document that staff has provided because otherwise we're not really 100% clear on the changes in policy that we're addressing.
So if I understand, you could just add to the end of number two, to provide concise changes in policy referring to the staff packet?
I'd, I'd refer explicitly to the draft document that staff has provided us because we are dealing with draft language that we have on the table, and that would allow us to change or add policies, delete them, or address that document as, as an object.
I think that's good.
Did I capture it here, Judith? I'm sorry, Commissioner Mayor. Okay. And then I had jumped to this one, to work to build consistence, consensus efficiently. That's what I thought you were asking me about, bullet point number three. Someone okay or? And then if consensus is not reached, to advance to a vote, to work towards a recommendation that the majority can support.
Are you referring to a vote on each element as a whole or on specific policy changes within the element?
Yeah, I think the, the method that we're looking at is with the specific policy, policy changes, so taking, you know, micro actions on each one of these to build a, you know, full action ultimately on the, the elements.
So in, in, in your view of number four, there would be two levels of vote. There would be potentially a vote on each policy or each proposed change, and then there would be a vote on the element as a whole?
Yeah, I think that's the way I'm envisioning it.
Okay, and when did you say the draft DIR would be out?
I don't have a specific date that I can commit to at this point. In part, it depends on us getting, you know, some, the drafts ready, and it also depends in part on us responding to our, our drafters with the specific technical detail that they've requested. But let's just say, you know, roughly this summer.
So we'd be basically providing the ER, EIR consultants with a draft, and then they would orient their analysis to the language of that draft?
That's correct. There's a lot of flexibility once that EIR has been produced because much of the policy language is not going to affect the environment. And so there's, you know, some flexibility in that. We do have, you know, without getting diverted too much, we do have some, some flexibility during that EIR process to amend the, the ultimate work product and, you know, and adopt something that is, you know, that has lesser environmental impact. If we find that we have greater environmental impact, we would have to recirculate the document and start over again.
Okay, just the reason I'm asking is that on the, on some of our most controversial issues, those are things that would involve an analysis of alternatives in a draft DIR. And I'm thinking, for example, of the LK couplet and the recreational resources involved there. And I, I sort of made a list of others that would be important to send on, to make sure that appropriate alternatives are actually analyzed. I know there's been some scoping already, but this then becomes sort of part of the scoping for that.
Yeah, I totally agree. I think that those topics will be fully resolved in your recommendation of the council in, in July. You will, I'm sure as a body, focus on those highest priority issues, and one of the prioritizations I'm sure that you'll be using, that we'll be using as a, as a team, if you will, getting through this work together, is how does this affect the environmental, you know, review? Is this a matter that we need to resolve before we release those documents? So I think that's a really salient point.
Is everyone comfortable with the objectives?
Yeah, I just, just to be clear, so if, for example, on circulation, I bring up certain changes that I think we should do, we discuss it. I, I give my presentation, there's a short discussion, then at some point, there's a vote on whether or not we as a group support that change, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and then we move on. And when I'm done, or whoever, whatever order, we go down the line?
Et cetera, et cetera.
Okay. And then at the end of all of, at the end of the evening, hopefully, we've gotten through that entire element, and we vote on the whole element with the changes that we've all agreed on.
Correct.
Or we've all majority voted on.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
I'm fine with these objectives.
Okay, let's see, so the outcome.
Judith, were you in favor of the objections?
As amended?
Objectives, rather, sorry. Four.
Okay, and then the outcome of this work will be revised drafts of each element and Form Based Code that will receive a consensus or lacking consensus majority recommendation again. So that's the, that's the work product that we'll produce through this process. Are there any concerns with this, or?
Sounds good to me.
I'm a little bit uncomfortable with all this consensus stuff. Assuming that we will roll over our consensus easily and, and then vote only as a, gee, maybe we don't agree after all type of event. I, I think it kind of oversimplifies what a consensus- I think it kind of oversimplifies what a consensus process is or should be. So, unless there's opportunity for full discussion, which the rest of this material doesn't seem to provide for, I'm not sure that we have a meaningful consensus on anything that's controversial. And so, the language there is really problematic to me.
Yeah, I think that is a, you know, really good point. I think our hope is that we can build a consensus, you know, through the process. The process may involve, you know, expanding discussions through, you know, additional meetings or, you know, changes to the process that allow for, you know, expanded discussion, you know, as we get to those components. But I do think that, you know, we have to recognize that, you know, the body takes action on, you know, majority votes and, you know, that ultimately, we may need to rely on that underlying majority vote, which is kind of how you're structured to begin with.
Yeah, I think there's any number of issues on which we don't all agree. And that the, while we would like unanimous decisions, which we sometimes get, really, as long as we can get a consensus opinion, then we can move forward.
Or a majority opinion.
Majority.
In the case of even split, like right now, we have six.
Yeah, that's a really good question. I'll get into a little bit more detail about how to address those when you have even splits through this gradients of agreement process. I think that, you know, if, and we can get into this in a little bit with the process. I think even if you had like, you know, three, four, you know, vote, let's say we're back up to seven, you have a three, four vote, technically, that majority takes it. But I think it's worth spending a little bit of extra time to work through the gradients of agreement and see if you can build consensus that way. And I'll explain that process in just a moment.
Something I like about this is that we'll see each other's thoughts before the meeting because I think often, you know, we're all hearing each other's thoughts for the first time at a meeting. And so, it takes a little while to like, understand what's being said and come to consensus in that sense of like, everyone agreeing that we're talking about the same thing. And I think hopefully, like when you gave your notes on the land use element and the growth element, which was really helpful, we can all figure that out beforehand.
One of the problems of coming up with cogent notes like that is it doesn't happen when you get a document late Friday afternoon after a work week, and you somehow need to get something together by 10 o'clock Monday morning.
I agree, and it may not always work for all of us at one time for one reason or another. And it doesn't preclude items being raised in meetings. But to the extent that we can bring things up ahead of time, I think the idea is that it gets us into our meeting further down the road where we've already seen each other's thoughts, have considered it, and can enter into more sort of meaningful discussions right out of the gate.
Would there be a possibility to ensure that anything we're expected to react to prior to a meeting is in our hand at least a week in advance?
Yeah, thank you for that. I was kind of going there as well. You'll note that the land use element has been in your packet for over a month now. The circulation?
Way more than that.
The circulation element, you know, it's part of the reason why we wanted to provide it to you tonight. There is no expectation that we'll get to that material tonight. But you have it in your packet, you'll have it to review and research. And I don't want to commit to, you know, dates, but that will be our target. And I think we have to recognize with all of this stuff that we're going to be working towards that goal as things, you know, you know, as we go through this process, we may find the need to make tweaks. We may find that we're not, you know, not going to meet 100%. We're not going to get an A+. But I think if we shoot for an A+, I think we're going to do good work. But yes, we will work to get those elements out, the draft elements out in at least a week before your meeting.
Can we, should we include that in the proposal of this somewhere?
Yeah, I think that is a little bit later in the process. So, let's put a note to that and we'll add that to the process.
Were there any other comments on the outcome, or are we going to take a straw vote on this now?
Everyone comfortable with the outcome? Language?
I'm comfortable with it.
Yes, Judith?
I'm not comfortable with it, but I'm not going to block it.
Okay, three and a partial.
Okay, so this is an oversimplification of the process that's outlined in the memo. But I just wanted to start with this as a way for us to wrap our brains around what it is that we're doing. So, it has a couple of different stages. We can do some preliminary work, some work before the meeting. We've just been talking about this, including getting drafts out early, putting our thoughts together on paper, submitting that to staff, staff compiling it, working from the draft policy that's in the packet, those kinds of issues. So, there's pre-work that will rank and organize the policy. We'll go through a process ahead of time and get that back out to you before your meeting. When we get into the meeting, the first step we'll take is to form some agreements around the policy that we're going to be discussing, the order in which we're going to be discussing it. The intent behind the section where we talk about, you know, the priority organization for, the priority for organization, rather, in the memo is to try and streamline this process. We can talk about the details about how to do that. The proposal isn't perfect. I acknowledge that, but it's a proposal on the table. But the idea here is that we won't spend time in the meeting discussing what we should be discussing. Instead, we'll spend our time in the meeting discussing that material. Next, we'd move on to deliberations. The deliberations I look at, you know, I think I used the terms in the memo of, you know, debate style. You can think of it as like, you know, your elevator pitch. And if it's helpful, I was thinking we could work through one of the issues that we recently worked through on the land use element that resulted in, you know, making significant, you know, headway into the issue. And it had a positive resolution, and it made change to the element. And it took us about 20 minutes, and I can walk you through, if you're interested, a way that we would run through these deliberations using that method that would streamline it to, you know, a couple of minutes, just if you're interested. So, that's the deliberations. You'd provide an elevator pitch, and we go through a process to vet that elevator pitch and quickly decide, are we moving on? You do that through polling. You have decisions and debates, which will have pollings that will take, including potentially negative polling. Negative polling is, you know, does anybody have an issue with that? That allows you to not vote to take up an issue. And then you're moving forward instead of trying to decide, well, am I for that? We'll have standard straw polling, are you for that? And then the gradients of agreement polling, which, you know, can help resolve some of those more nuanced issues where you still do have concerns, but you're, as Commissioner Mayor put forward, not willing to block it. And then ultimately, the, you go to a decision, and then you circle back your elevator pitch to the next policy. And we'll go through this, these cycles with this process to get through as many of those policy areas as possible within the timeframe, recognizing we're going to have a time-limited discussion. Anything that's left over goes into our bike rack, and then we'll come back to those, as many of those as we can. Part of this process that we're going to go through tonight is to verify where we're at, the work we have ahead of us, and the items that we still feel that we can, you know, cover in that timeframe. We're going to do a little bit of vetting early in this process. So, here is the overall process.
I just want to stop and say, I think it would be very useful to go through the process that you talked about. At what point were you thinking about doing that sort of demonstration?
Yeah, we can do that right now, or we could do that after, as part of the discussion on the more nitty-gritty of what the method would look like.
Let's do that. Let's do that after this. I just don't want to lose that because I think it would be, I am sure it would be useful for the commission as well as the public just to kind of get a walkthrough on how that feels and looks.
Yeah, absolutely. And I know we're not 100% prepared tonight for the substantive material that we have on the table. But if we can, you know, make some, a little bit of headway, if we have time into those discussions, that would be great too. Okay, so, I don't want you to read this at this scale. I'm going to zoom in. But I just want to put forward that this process really has two branches. The proponent for change would come in, and if you adopt, and again, you can change any of these metrics or the process, but if you accept this, then what the process would look like would be that the proponent would come in and make a pitch, the elevator pitch. Get 45 seconds to say, "I would like to make this change. Here are the reasons why I think this change is important. I provide you specific language. The language that I provided addresses these problems in this way." That pitch then goes to a process, perhaps of negative polling. Does anyone have a concern with this? I'm not seeing any concerns. Let's make that change and move on. So, that would be, you know, a way to do that, that goes quickly to conclusion. Alternatively, you could go into a question to, are there any opposing, you know, proposals? Is there any, you know, counterproposal here? If there are no counter-proposals, you know, if you've done the first check, no one's, you know, you've basically done negative polling and said, "Does anyone take issue with this?" Someone took issue? Okay, well, let's go to, you know, this process. Are there counter-proposals? Well, no, I don't have a counterproposal necessarily. I just want to, you know, hear a little bit more. Then you can go into the second stage, which would be direct polling. And that's either going to result in the change being approved or the change not being approved. If you get into a situation where it's close with seven, you know, you generally aren't going to have an exact split, you know, even split, but you might have a close vote, and you as a commission may feel like, hey, let's explore this in a little bit more detail. So, with a close vote, you might ask for either a little bit of follow-up in the process, or you could go to a gradients of agreement process where that gradients of agreement would tease apart who's for, who's against, who's kind of in the middle, and not willing to block it. So, let's take a quick look at this. Let's say we get to the point where, you know, I've put forward a proposal. You know, one of the commissioners has, I'm injecting myself as a commissioner. I won't be making proposals. You all will be. One commissioner makes a proposal, puts forward their pitch. You're not sure how you feel about it. You know, you're not really leaning heavily one way or the other. Comes to a negative vote, and you raise your hand, you know, "I'm not exactly comfortable with this, you know, and I need to explore this in a little more detail." The gradients of agreement allow us to, you know, through raising our hand and holding up the number of fingers that corresponds to how we're feeling about that, it allows us to assess, you know, if there's more energy that we need to put into it. If it turns out that the four-three split really lies along the spectrum of, you know, one to three, one, I completely agree with it. I have no concerns. Two, I'm supportive with minor concerns. I'm not going to block it. I have minor concerns, but let's move forward. Three, I'm neutral. I have no opinion. If you all want to go forward with it, great. I don't, I'm not going to interfere. Four, I have strong objections actually, but I'm not going to block it. There are more important issues for me. And then five, I'm not going to support it. I'm going to block this if I can. Through this gradients of agreement, you can sort out where you may not be feeling comfortable saying no. You may not be feeling comfortable saying yes if it were put to a standard straw poll, and we could flesh out a little bit more of a nuance about, you know, where people are landing.
The idea being that in a specific circumstance in which we have, for example, a three-four vote, three-four doesn't give us enough information about where the counts, the planning commission really lies. But using gradients of agreement, we can see that the four-four are very strongly for, and maybe some of the against are not completely, am I getting that correct?
Yeah, you are getting that correct. And I think that it, you know, it illustrates the first straight polling. It illustrates that there may be an issue we need to explore in more detail. And we can add components as we get into the more detailed levels of debate. We can add those components to this as well. So, for instance, we ended up with a three-four vote. We do gradients of agreement. We find that actually, you know, maybe only one of us is so strongly opposed to it that we're going to block it. Or we might find that, you know, everybody falls along the spectrum one to four. So, it allowed us to build a little bit more information into the vote. We actually have a consensus through that motion moving forward, at least a consensus that we're not strongly enough opposed to it to block it. And it provides an opportunity to explore the ideas in a little more detail. On the other branch, there's a counterproposal, and you go into a debate where, you know, each person who's putting forward a proposal or a counterproposal gives their 45-second elevator pitch. You might have a little bit of that in this process that quickly gets us to, "Okay, I see your point now. It makes a little more sense to me, and we can move quickly on to discussion." A part that isn't included in here yet is you may get to a point where you say, "Look, this issue is so important. I think we need to have more time spent on it. Can we table this? We'll put it into the bike rack and put it as one of the highest priority items to come back to." If you recognize, we're just not going to get to it in this format. And I think that may go to address Commissioner Mayor's concerns that we're not going to have enough time to explore all of these big issues in the way that we need to with this format. So, you know, you can work through some of the issues that way as well. So, let me pause for a second. I'll work through the issue. And the one that I've been thinking about is the issue that came up with the land use element last meeting, addressing changing some of the residential low-density properties to higher residential that Commissioner Simmons brought up. We had a really, what I thought was a healthy conversation about that matter. It took us about 15 or 20 minutes to get through that material. A lot of really good ideas were presented. Commissioner Mayor and I had both very lengthy things to say. I think that, you know, just recognizing myself, I need a timer to kick me under the table so that I know when to stop. But I can also adhere to a very limited timeframe. So, that conversation could have gone something like this. Commissioner Simmons says, you know, "With respect to the land use element, I'd like to put forward an additional policy. I've supplied that policy in advance to staff. Can you bring that up now?" We put it up. The policy reads, "Change the following districts from residential low to residential high density." "The reason why I'd like to change these residential low to residential highs is because I believe that they are close to activity centers where a higher population density would be beneficial. It would reduce our greenhouse gases, reduce the travel times that people are taking, and put the housing where it's most needed." Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Simmons. As a chair, I'd like to ask, is there anyone who's opposed to making this recommendation? Commissioner Mayor raises her hand and says, "You know, I actually do have a concern with that." Okay, Commissioner Mayor, can you tell us what your concern is? My concern is that we have well-established neighborhoods that are, you know, that have a rich context and that there are other areas within the city that I feel like have a higher potential for high densification. Furthermore, I'm concerned that putting this matter on the, you know, on the agenda now at this time is going to actually introduce more delay as we divert some of our attention into that matter instead. I'd like to propose that we set this up as an implementation measure instead of making the change now. We can explore it further. Is there anybody who has a concern with that, you know? Commissioner Simmons, is that addressed your concern? Okay, we potentially have moved on at that point. If we haven't moved on, if we haven't gotten a consensus out of that discussion, that very brief discussion, there could be, you know, requests for a counter, other counter-proposals. If none, then, you know, anything that you'd like to rebut about that. So, then, you know, Commissioner Simmons can take a few moments and reflect on what he just heard and, you know, perhaps say, "Yeah, no, I understand the points you're making. I'd like to, you know, retract my position and go forward with an implementation measure." Okay, do we have consensus on that? Yes? Okay, great. We're moving forward. If not, you know, if Commissioner Simmons says, "No, I feel like this is really important," we could go into the gradients of agreement tool to find that, you know, the majority of commissioners are actually willing to make that change. Or we could find that everyone was swayed by Commissioner Mayor's position. And, you know, I'm more on the four-five end of the spectrum. So, then, let's move on and have that be an implementation measure. So, my discussion, my description of that was more, it took more time because I had to add in the different process pieces that could have happened. But you could see how that discussion could have happened in about- that discussion could've happened in about 2 or 3 minutes, and could've probably resolved with the same kind of conclusion, without having to explain in great detail the background for why we believe what we believe, just that we believe it, and that could be compelling Does that make sense?
I have a question about what will come up for discussion under that model, and what will be tabled to the bike rack, or whatever you're calling it. At the beginning of the process, a few slides ago, there was a prioritization process, which presumably would say which things we were gonna be discussing at all. If an issue is of concern to one or two commission members, and they feel strongly about it, but nobody else takes that up, that gets relegated to the, gee, we don't have enough time to talk about that one. Not that we disagree with you, there's no chance to disagree, but that it's not our priority, therefore, it automatically gets shoved to the bike rack, which we never get to. So I am kinda concerned about the gradients process operating along with a pre-prioritization process, which in effect means that the staff-provided draft language stands, and we never really talk about it. So that, to me, is a problem, in part because I can imagine that there may be some issues that a minority of commissioners feel strongly about, or that simply pass under the radar because they didn't get on that priority list and everyone has to go home by 9:00. So how do we address that with a July 11th deadline?
Can I answer that? What I'm just wondering is, those items will go into the bike rack, they're not gonna disappear, right? So we all have them in front of us or on a screen, and at some point, it's gonna come down to that elevator pitch to open up that item and say, "You guys, I think we're overlooking this, it's really important to me, I know I was the only one that brought that up," or whatever, you know, "It didn't make the top list." But it's gonna have to be a good elevator pitch to get a little momentum going on that item, and that would be the organic process that is the best we can do, I think, in that case.
It might, but I hope the chair is planning to bring some duct tape and the mic switch, because I don't do elevator processes very well, and I don't think that should be a condition to bring an important issue before this body or before the public.
So, if I was understanding you, part of it is that we're all likely to rank the most controversial things highest, right? And then there will be somewhat less controversial, but strongly held by one commissioner topics that we never get to talk about. And I don't exactly know how to implement it yet, but I think that something like a consent process for bike rack things that, you know, like, we could all vote on every bike rack thing at some point and say, "I'm okay with that." And if, you know, all seven commissioners say they're okay with something from the bike rack, like, did we need to have a big discussion about it, or was it something that we all agreed on and thought it was a good idea? Right? And obviously, that won't apply to controversial things, I'm talking about the sort of strongly held beliefs of one commissioner that not everyone ranks highly as a thing to talk about in person.
That would ideally make sense, if that time limit wasn't pressing on us, and I do feel that a bunch of stuff that hangs out in the bike rack is stuff that we won't discuss, because there won't be time, and there won't really be a chance to provide a meaningful dialogue about. And so this type of consensus with the timeframe on top of it doesn't work as well as it might if there really was a chance to have meaningful return to the things that were not priorities to begin with. And I think that having the written comments in advance would probably help with that, but on this timeframe, I'm not sure that we're gonna get those written comments. I, for one, am sometimes gobsmacked at the things that I consider really important, that sort of fly below the radar for others. Sometimes we do come back to those things, when other people can sort of see how that fits in. Usually, we don't, and I think that's a problem here. So I think that if we had a process like this, without the time constraints, it would be terrific. I'm not gonna limit what I say to 45 seconds, and then turn the mic off.
On the decision or debate portion that I'm seeing up there, I didn't maybe follow that there's no time constraint on all of it. If there's a deliberation that's occurring, I don't think anybody's expected to be cut off, I think it's just that, like, step up, step down when you're introducing an item, so that we, you know, hear it concisely and briefly and passionately, however you wanna pitch it, but not, I mean, that part sounds to me like the place of constraint. Discussion and back and forth deliberating that we do is just gonna occur naturally and organically, I don't, I don't know, am I getting it wrong? There's, I'm not seeing or hearing of a cutoff in there anywhere.
Yeah, no, I think that the, you know, you're going to have to continually reprioritize what you wish to spend your energy on. I think if you decide that you're not going to have limits to, you know, to the way that you bring these items forward, that the majority of this process doesn't really work. Staff can certainly provide some tools to help, you know, focus, excuse me, focus those pitches, so that you have a, you know, framework that helps you to put down your idea, bring forward the points, and then have the proposal ready in advance. I think that, you know, we can help support that, especially early on, 'cause I think this is all very new. I think the consent adoption of bike rack items is a really good idea, and we'll try and figure out how to incorporate that, but I think that, you know, it could look something like, you know, "We've got these items in the bike rack, we're getting ready to close on the meeting tonight, you know, are there items in here that, you know, anyone would not be amenable to adopting, you know, in one motion?" And then you pull those ones off, and then adopt the rest, so that you're kind of whittling down, you know, the policies. In terms of taking more time, you know, I understand the, you know, the challenge here that it represents, I think we are in this place right now because of the time that has lapsed, leading up to this point. You know, again, the council did identify this as a priority for this summer, last summer, and, you know, you have the opportunities to build in more time through, you know, special meetings, you have the opportunity to, on the schedule, which I hope to get to soon, to come back to matters in June, and then again, you have additional time to address matters that didn't get covered during this timeframe, after that, before the finals were adopted. So what I would suggest as another addition to this process is that you prioritize items that are gonna have the potential for an impact on the environment, and so those items get prioritized in this process. Lastly, the, you know, the concept that there may be one commissioner or two commissioners who feel strongly about an item that the other commissioners just aren't willing to address, that is a, that is the process, that's the process that we're involved in. If those matters came to a vote, whether you talked yourself blue in the face, you would fail to garner support for those because you don't have it to even have the conversation. And so I think that that's part of this process, too, recognizing that part of weeding out the issues that are not rising to the full body's support to even discuss means that their staying is currently drafted, and so, you know, that seems like a pretty significant component to this. So if you have something that you feel like, I think to Commissioner Tagney's point, really could raise to the level of other commissioners' attention, honing in on your elevator pitch and making that, you know, succinct statement at the beginning to support that and see if you can garner support is gonna be really important to this process. The other side, we've already discussed this, so I'm gonna skim through this, the other side of that branch from the proponent's original pitch includes where you have counter-proposals. The counterproposal just adds a couple additional layers of, you know, process that allows for each individual counterproposal to be heard succinctly, and then addressed through a series of polling processes, the same exact kind, where you could start with straight polling and then move on to gradients of agreement if you couldn't get there.
So what would happen if two commissioners wrote in, you know, suggested changes on the same policy, for example? Like, how would you decide which one we'd talk about first, and, yeah?
That's an example of, you know, where you'd have these counter-proposals that I had envisioned, and so both proposals would be, let's say you had them beforehand, both proposals would be on the screen, we'd take a look at them, identify the differences between those proposals, and then one person would elect to go first. You know, "I'd like to make my pitch first, here are the reasons why I support this change, this is the impact I think they'll have." Second person goes, same deal, these are the reasons for the change, this is the impact I think they will have. The, in that situation, I think each commissioner would have the ability to have a rebuttal, so you've heard that person's position, maybe you're convinced by it, and you say, you know, "I'm gonna cede my rebuttal time because you've made a really compelling argument, and I'd like to move forward with your, you know, hearing a vote on your position." Maybe you have, you know, more additional information that you'd like to put forward, and so you put that forward in your rebuttal, the other person makes their rebuttal, and then you take action on it.
What if in the midst of these discussions, someone who hadn't weighed in with a proposal in the first place had something important to say after the discussion had started? There's no room for that in that process. Would the chair then ask if there are any other feelings before there's some sort of a decision or consensus?
Absolutely, I think that's, you know, you know, part of the process of the negative polling is, does anyone have concerns or issues they'd like to raise? And then, you know, it's, you know, the idea is that you would put your thoughts together and make them known fairly quickly, so that we could move forward. It may be a third, you know, counterproposal, in that case, then you bifurcate again. It may be, you know, in support of, or it may be a question to, one of the proposals that have been made. So it's not completely inflexible, it's just a structure that allows us to move through the material quickly if we can. If we find, as we're starting to explore these, that, you know, there's, it's ballooning, the conversation is ballooning, and we're not resolving, then we would put that in the bike rack and say, "We need to come back to this." Obviously, because of the level of discussion that we're having here, this is an important issue, but in order to close this agenda item tonight, in order to meet those objectives that we have, and actually make a recommendation, let's move on to the next one, see if we can come back to this one. It could be, you know, what I'm anticipating is within the frameworks, the timeframes that you have available to you in a meeting, depending on the length of time that it takes you to move through these issues, you could go through, you know, 8, you could go through 15. I haven't yet seen an element that has more than 15 policy challenges to what we've got in there, but let's assume that there are. Once you get behind, you know, 15 policies, your changes may be so minor that, you know, a consensus agreement on the bike rack, or whatever you choose to call it, I call it a bike rack, again, you can call it whatever you want, I just didn't wanna call it a parking lot. So that's another agreement I'd like you all to make. So, yeah, I think that there's, you know, there's gonna be process components, think of it like a puzzle, process components that you plug in, given what the nature of the conversation is at the time. Yeah, the EV charging station.
I think we got it, I think we're there.
All of this seems like common sense, those 45-second and 2-minute time limits, I guarantee, will make me crazy. And this seems to be a reasonable approach and discussion in general, if there's a chance to come back to things. If you can change the wording to succinct presentation, or something like that, that would really help me. Otherwise, I hope there's a really big supply of off switches and duct tape.
We do have available a couple of props here.
I heard you said we have tape, I was like, David.
No, we don't have tape, we don't have tape. So one of the things that you could do is, you know, agree to a time limit, you know, decide amongst yourself, I mean, we suggested 45 seconds, I feel like, you know, you probably would be surprised how long 45 seconds is, if you've got your thoughts written down in advance in bullet point format, and you may find that that's sufficient time, we can give you a 10-second warning when you're approaching that limit, and then let you know when you're done with that limit, and then, it's really, it's up to you, I mean, this is an honor system, this is an agreement that you're all working towards, recognizing that, you know, if you've got, you know, 6 more seconds in you to wrap it up, you know, then you should take those 6 seconds. If you're like, "Look, I get it, I went through the 45 seconds, I'd like to ask for a point of order, I need another 45, I'm just not gonna get through my points in this amount of time, would the commission accept that?", then, you know, I think you're probably gonna give each other the grace to get through these conversations. The idea being that we're trying to make these processes efficient and structured as possible.
Does it help at all that it'll be something you've already written up and that we've all read? 'Cause I, when I gave my pitch last time, I was tempted to just say, "You all read what I wrote, what do you think?" Right? And I almost feel like that could be my 2 minutes.
It does help, and I would note that I tend to be the only one here who tends to write things out and circulate them in advance, so I am familiar with that concept. I also time my students in debates with the little signs, it makes them all crazy. There's nothing unfamiliar here, I don't wanna look at that sign, I don't wanna have that timer on at 45 seconds.
Before you commit to that too much, I wanna point out that you asked the public to do the same thing. You have your 3-minute timer, so I recognize you are not the public.
That's why I'm so aware of it, and if there are 20 people out there in the public, that does allow them all to speak, but if someone puts a 45-second sign in front of me, it's gonna jangle my thoughts, even if I've written them out, because I'm gonna be thinking about that, and I'm not gonna be thinking about making a reasonable pitch. And I'm at the point of, I'm agreeing with this process if you'll get rid of those damn numbers.
Okay, so it's up to you all to, you know, to decide how you wanna do that, and again, I do wanna emphasize that you will need to, at some point, reflect on how is this working for us, and modify along the way, I think that's gonna be a component to this, and so, you know, you might find, hey, look, you know, let's start with not timing, and, you know, we'll keep track, how long are your pitches taking? We're actually reasonably within that 45 minutes, 45 seconds to 1 minute.
Go ahead, Dan.
I just feel like we're starting to repeat ourselves too much on this one, and that, you know, we're moving forward, and I guess this last point about whether or not we have a hard number or no number, and just kinda feel it out, I'm fine with that, too, I just think the rough framework is there, where we seem to be in full agreement on the rough framework, and I'm anxious to give it a try.
I think we give it a try, and if it feels like it doesn't work for one reason or another, then we can agree to adapt the strategy to make it work better for all commissions and styles of representation, but I think it's, I think it's at least a good starting point, and we should give it a try. How's everyone feel about that?
Yes, for sure.
I'm happy to give it a try.
Give it a shot, Judith.
I just said I'm agreeing to the proposal. I'm not going to agree to the numbers and I will probably, um, run over. Sorry.
We, we can also incorporate into the process that we won't show Commissioner Mayor the signs.
Okay. Let's, let's move ahead.
Okay. Okay. So that is the process piece. I think, um, I applaud you all. Um, I know this is a, a big change. I think we've worked through a lot of, uh, material already. I think it's important to take a second look at the, the schedule, the timeline as it's currently laid out. To help facilitate this discussion, I handed out, uh, a new revised attachment A. Uh, there are copies on the table here if the public are, are interested in looking at these. Uh, attachment A lists the, um, form-based code specific concerns that were raised by the commission in September of last year. Uh, the follow-up that was requested associated with that. And then we've outlined here dates for when these theoretically could be accomplished. I want to point out that some of these dates, um, do not have, uh, you know, they're, they're not firm. Uh, we'll go through those. It also has on the bottom, under the heading element, the various elements of the general plan and the date at which you, we would be able to review those. And all of these dates run through, uh, through the end of June. And so here is a proposal for how you can get through that material. Uh, it's reflected on, uh, the wall here in poster format. It's reflected on the screen here and I'm going to zoom in because I recognize that you can't see, uh, these. Uh, but what I'd like to do is for, uh, entertain a discussion amongst the commission, in particular focusing on the work that you identified in the, the form-based code, to ensure that these are still high priority areas and you want to try and, uh, accomplish these within the dates and timelines. The contrast here is, uh, very bad on this screen. It's better on the computer, uh, on the TVs and hopefully on your monitors up there. Uh, but it's all reflected in, um, attachment A, this revised attachment A. So you can see that we've, you know, we've got this dating back to January. Some of these are accomplished already. Uh, upcoming, moving down to sea level rise, uh, you've got, uh, study session scheduled and planned for, so that's on the ticket. Lack of multimodal infrastructure was one of the issues that came up, in particular how that relates to L and K Street. Um, and the proposal is to bring that, the infrastructure impacts, uh, as well as a discussion on infrastructure financing on April 11th. The accessibility issue, there, there was a, a request to bring a speaker. I haven't identified one yet. Um, I'm in discussions with Peggy Martinez, who's probably our, uh, foremost expert in this topic. Um, and, you know, that may be able to be done by the 22nd. There is a lot on the 22nd, uh, with construction impacts, uh, presentation, uh, from engineering. And then, I'm sorry. Oh, 22nd is our, um, study session, uh, date. This is not a regular, uh, planning commission date. And on the 22-
What day of the week is that?
That's Saturday. So this is the Saturday that we asked you to reserve in April to do the form-based code workshop. And so that would be an opportunity to come back and look at some more detail on form-based code. We won't have the draft at that point, but we'll have some, uh, real specific targeted questions for you. Uh, and then we propose at that time, you can identify these other issues, accessibility and, um, construction impacts, as well potentially as the, uh, you know, follow-up on any circulation. There was a request to discuss heightened shading views, examples from other cities, fiscal impacts. Uh, we propose those for the 25th. Ownership opportunities gentrification on the 9th and the 23rd, impacts on the Creamery District building, um, uh, effect on businesses in the Creamery District and tsunami storm, storm surge. I'd like you to look at this list and identify whether you want to, uh, still try to accomplish all of these. One of these was to invite ourselves to the Playhouse or somewhere else in the Creamery District, uh, to have a special meeting, a study session, uh, onsite. Uh, that's, uh, the one that's identified on the 23rd. That's actually a regular planning commission meeting. And so instead of moving that to onsite, uh, the proposal here before you is to move that to a regular planning commission meeting and make sure that we invite folks in the Creamery District to come to you. We have a lot of, uh, you know, technological challenges when we're having meetings off-site. You know, there's been a request amongst the public to make sure that these, uh, meetings are recorded. Uh, we can't do that in the Creamery Building. Um, there's a lot of other, uh, issues and challenges that present. And I think given the timeframes, you may consider, uh, eliminating the, we invite ourselves out to the Creamery District. And then in addition to take up any of these other items that you have, uh, you know, low priority for, uh, you know, I might identify, you know, tsunami and storm surge. Um, I will let you know that I've spoken with Jay Patton, one of our, uh, leading experts. Uh, he's a geologist, uh, in the, in the region and, um, he's agreed to come and talk to you about the tsunami maps if you're interested in keeping that on. So first run-through on, uh, you know, uh, this, these items, uh, looking at March 14th through June 27th. Um, I do want to identify that we've got the, the bike rack or whatever you choose to call it, uh, for, uh, the meetings in June right now scheduled, if we can hold to these, uh, timelines. And then that would also be a time to come back and look at the, the form-based code in draft format.
David, could you briefly identify which meetings are not just regularly scheduled planning commission meetings?
Yeah. The only one on the list right now is the 422 meeting. The rest of these are regular, uh, meeting dates. With the action that you took earlier, these will all be special meetings because they don't conform to your standard, uh, meet, regular meetings. So they'll all be special meetings, but they're on the regular meeting dates. Uh, and then, uh, I'm sorry, the one other, uh, I didn't catch this apparently when I made the revisions here. Uh, if you look under the elements, I have land use, circulation and mobility for the gateway, scheduled, uh, for 318. That's this Saturday's session, which we cannot have because we don't have a quorum. So you'll need to find a time to move those, um, to another date.
We'll have to reschedule that. Go ahead, Judith.
So what I'm understanding here is all of these are for the gateway. When on earth do we work on the general plan elements? I would point out it's 8:15 now. We've been working on the land use element for, uh, several months. And when I'm thinking about these dates for what appears to be all the gateway, um, and thinking about the general plan update elements, I, I don't, I don't see the minutes in our schedule to do both of those by the end of June.
Yeah, we, um, you know, absolutely, it's a lot of work and I think that's one of the reasons why we're asking at this time, is there anything that you want to deprioritize now, looking at this list? Um, you can see the three timelines here. You know, the top bar is the general plan, the middle bar is the gateway plan and the lower bar is the form-based code. Uh, when you zoom in on the various dates, you can see that we have general plan, for instance, on the 11th, general plan and gateway overlapping. Um, these are both circulation and infrastructure. Um, so, you know, there'll be some economy of scale there. Um, you can see on the 22nd, we're proposing to have accessibility and construction impacts if those stay on the list, uh, as well as the form-based code. That's our special meeting. Whoops. And then going out from April to June, uh, you see some similar overlap. So this is, this is where the discipline comes in. This is where, uh, the prioritization comes in. And I think this is where, you know, potentially having some of these items either fall over into the bike rack for those lower priority issues, um, and/or recognizing that once you make your recommendation in July, uh, that you'll still have time to go back and pick up the issues that you didn't feel like were, uh, you know, critical to environmental review and/or, uh, you know, hypersensitive to, uh, into priorities within the city, uh, that you've just got, you know, what I'll call cleanup to do on other policy areas.
Is the city suggesting that if we invite the folks from the Creamery District here so that we have better technological capacity, that also somehow frees up, um, additional, uh, time in some fashion for reviewing other components of this?
Yeah, I think the intent, um, or at least my understanding of the intent behind the commission's action to try and hold a meeting in the Creamery District, uh, was one, to, to make sure that, you know, you're, you're getting out into the community and, and, you know, doing some, some good engagement. And number two, to recognize that, you know, the, uh, the folks in this area have a, uh, you know, an added interest because the, you know, their, um, their lives will change from, uh, you know, from, uh, development and they, they own property out there, they own businesses and wanted to be able to, you know, extend that hand. I think in part, the reason you could justify changing that earlier decision is because, um, the, you know, there has been, you know, prior engagement, first off, with the Creamery folks. Uh, there's been ongoing engagement and in addition, you know, inviting them to come here instead of us going there, while that's not as convenient for them, it's a reasonable trade-off for the time that we have left to, to address these issues.
Right. So that gets to, more specifically, what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, does getting them to come to us save us time and therefore open up further time for some of these other items for us to discuss?
I believe it does in that, um, the, uh, you know, yes. I'll keep it short. Yes.
Okay. My, my personal position on that is that the, we are so close to the Creamery sitting here that it's not an undue hardship to get them to come to our meeting, especially if it gives us a little more breathing room with some of these other items to discuss. But I'd like to hear what other commissioners think about that.
I agree. It's about a six-minute walk, um, if it saves us any time. Is this, did this come from us, the idea of us going there? It sounded fun at the time or something, but-
Yeah. It, it did. And given the, given the direction of the city council and the amount of stuff we have to go through, I think if we can buy ourselves a little more time for other discussions by having them come five minutes across to us, it makes sense. Matt, Judith?
I'm fine with it being here.
I don't care.
Okay. Then let's move to change that meeting, um, and have that meeting here at our normal bat time and bat channel.
Okay. Is there anything else on this list that you want to, um, either deprioritize and hope to get to or remove from the list?
You already did the tally on the Saturday's meeting that's not going to happen?
Yeah. We do not have a quorum, unfortunately. We, we had sent out a when to meet back when, when we were, uh, trying to develop the, the timeline for the form-based code engagement. And the, the Saturday was one of the dates that everyone said, or the majority of people said they could, uh, attend. Um, things have changed, things change sometimes, and now we don't have a quorum. So, um, yeah, we need to either reschedule that timeframe or take the material that we were going to discuss in that timeframe. We were going to spend four hours to cover land use and circulation and then hopefully to get ahead, um, in some of the other areas. So we'll have to either reschedule that, find another, you know, four-hour block, uh, through a couple of, uh, special meetings, uh, and/or, you know, schedule another Saturday.
Okay. I'll try to stay flexible. I would like to ask about another item on our list and I, I think I know the answer, but I'll ask anyway. Accessibility. My hunch is that there's an immense amount of code that describes what accessibility needs to be. Are we suggesting by putting that on a priority list and having a special speaker that, um, we might in the gateway go beyond what state law and federal law and local codes already require?
Yeah. I think the, the idea is to, um, evaluate setting a standard that is, uh, higher, not only for, uh, the private sphere, but also for the public sphere, uh, with greater attention to accessibility. Just because it meets ADA doesn't mean that it's designed so that it's accessible and inclusive. It could be that, uh, you know, instead of having, you know, a, a speaker on this and we take time in a, a meeting, you know, I work to get some, some written, uh, materials that, uh, you can review outside the meeting and then, you know, we go through this process. You either say, yeah, that looks good to us, um, let's incorporate that, or, you know, I have some changes I'd like to make.
Go ahead, Judith.
It seems that if we're going to have a draft form-based code, um, to look at at some point, um, if we give direction that we want to go for a standard above that and we build it into both a community benefits program and public sphere, uh, design standards, that will be a document that we can review. And if we, um, ask the drafters, uh, to go far beyond to, there are a number of standards that do that, um, on both a, a neighborhood or public sphere level and a private or site-by-site design, um, standard, then we can review that. But we need to see something in front of us. Um, I think that, you know, familiarizing ourselves with concepts of accessibility, um, on the schedule that you're looking at may, um, be something that we need to do on our own time. Um, and yet I was the one who suggested that it be there. And, and so it, it sort of breaks my heart to take it off because I think it's something for the land use code in general, as well as for the gateway, um, and something that the city should be taking very seriously. I, I think an important consideration here is that if we're to address these things responsibly for the gateway and the general plan, um, we might also request some more time to do that from the city council. And if I'm a broken record on that, so be it. I'm going to keep saying it.
I like the idea of us doing our own studies on that. If there's some materials that would satisfy the commission and staff.
Okay. Yeah, we can do that. And I, I do think that, um, having specific standards, uh, is, is important. Not going to get into the detail now, but the standards that we adopt in the local sphere that we have control over have, has a completely different process than that for the, the private sphere. And we'll bring that information forward as well. So my understanding, the majority of the commission is okay dropping that topic for now, reviewing it outside and then looking at specific standards down the road when we have codes.
Yes.
Okay.
Can I just make a suggestion here? I'm, I'm an optimist and so hopefully we will get through some of these things, you know, in one meeting. And I would recommend agendizing the bike rack for essentially every meeting so that we can always move to talking about bike rack issues at the end of a meeting, that we do get through these issues and then hopefully, you know, get through as many of those as soon as possible.
Yeah, absolutely. We'll, uh, we'll revise the, the memo, uh, to, to have that, that consent of bike rack issues. And, and I definitely think we were intending to have some way to come back and, and address those in the meeting. Is there anything we can clean up before we close?
You know, I think that's a good idea and I think we're all landed on calling it a bike rack, so let's just stick with that, um, moving forward. You have the meeting on, uh, May 23rd. One of the items is the tsunami and storm surge. And do we think, you, you say consider under, um, SLR, uh, and local coastal program? Are we going to be able to cover that? Is that going to be, is there going to be any overlap there with our meeting on, um, our, our next regularly scheduled planning commission meeting when we have the SLR panel here?
Yes. Yes. And yes. Yes, there will be. I'm going to, I'm going to spare you the detail, but yeah, we're going to, we're going to have that as a, a topic. It won't be a focus.
Okay. But we could maybe pull that out of the 523 meeting if we have sufficient discussion or information pending that SLR panel discussion?
I think that's a good idea and I'll also prepare some, um, uh, information under the infrastructure section. Uh, the state has revised the tsunami maps and the entire gateway area is outside of the tsunami zone. And so we'll, we'll provide you that information.
That thought would be good. Does anybody else have any other, uh, changes or any meetings they want to?
Did anyone object to removing the tsunami topic?
No objections. No objections.
Or agendizing bike rack, I think I saw nods, but we want to just make sure that was supported, yeah, great.
And when I spoke to you before, you mentioned that the Local Coastal Program would not be part of the general plan that we would be recommending approval for in July. And clearly, that Local Coastal Program is an element, or would be an element of the general plan. So if there are issues like this, that do come into the realm of the Local Coastal Program very specifically, when are we going to deal with that?
The short answer is, the Local Coastal Program is on a, we just received a grant, it's back on track for adoption sometime next year, and there are areas within the Gateway Area Plan that, you know, will need to be adopted into the Local Coastal Program and certified by the Coastal Commission. Depending on how the timelines line up, that'll either happen with the comprehensive update that we submit for under the grant that we were awarded, or it will follow that comprehensive update as a minor amendment.
So 23, 24?
Can I say yes?
Sounds great. Have we, we've gotten to where we intended to get to? If so, it's 8:30, and I would like to move to public comment?
Yeah, I think unless there's any other adjustments that you want to make to the schedule here, or, you know, commitment now to finding additional times to have special meetings, you can save that for later, too. You can see how this is going, and then say, you know, "We need more meetings."
Dan?
Yeah, so 4/22 now, the Saturday meeting, does it, I forget the timeframe on that, is it eight to?
Eight to nine, 8:30 to 12:30.
Eight thirty to twelve thirty. So all we have on that is engineering?
I'm sorry, we have the construction impacts presented by engineering, we also have Form-Based Code. We'll have a targeted Form-Based Code workshop with Ben to try and get more information from you all, with some templates, additional information, so that he can finalize some of the work he's doing.
So he will be here, then?
He'll be here.
That's not reflected on the schedule.
It's not reflected on the, well, it's not on attachment A, it's in this figure here. And, yeah, we can expand attachment A to reflect the Form-Based Code as well, but the...
So really, it's Form-Based Code, if Ben's going to be here, that's mostly what we're doing, is that correct?
We, I think, are going to have to use his time efficiently, and we're likely, in particular, if there's no additional special meetings scheduled, you know, between now and then, we're going to likely have some catch-up that we're doing at that meeting as well. The things that start falling off the schedule as we work through this material, I anticipate we'll have to, you know, push into that meeting. So we're going to structure that four-hour block so that Ben has a good chunk of time to get what he needs to finalize the draft of the Form-Based Code. We're going to use the balance of that time to address topics on this list.
Okay, so how about if we all make a goal of not, of being really efficient between now and then, so that we can give Ben most of that? I mean, Form-Based Code is big, and if he's coming up here to see us, I'd sure like to think that we're going to have a robust Form-Based Code session.
Yep.
And I don't know how much we can accomplish in four hours with him, but I'd love to spend all of it talking about Form-Based Code.
And so that does bring up the question of agenda, which would be, are we going to just take the time we need with Ben, and then review construction impacts at the end?
Yep.
Time allowing, otherwise, we'll put Netra off to a future meeting.
Yeah, put him in the bike rack.
Put him in the bike rack.
Put him in the bike rack. Netra will appreciate being put in the bike rack.
Yeah. Okay, given that, I would like to open this to public comment, and again, if people could line up at the lectern, and then we will move after comments from audience members to comments on Zoom.
Okay, my first question is, why am I not seeing SB 1000, Environmental Justice and Local Land Use Planning? This is something that I put into the scoping back in March, I put in August letters to you, let's see, October, November recently. This was something that the city, as I remember a year ago, was pretty on board, that they were going to weave this into all this information. So, why isn't it, why isn't it not being mentioned, you know? I mean, I've gone into detail with this, I'm not going to spend my two minutes and seventeen seconds on it right now, but you've gotten that information, and for some reason, you're not touching it. So, that, you know, that law requires that, you know, there's a safety element, there's deals with flooding, sea level rise, fire, air noise, conservation, traffic, and how you deal with that specific law with all of those. And that's not just my opinion, you know, the Attorney General of the State of California, this is an important thing to him, too. So, I would strongly encourage you to start doing something there, because I see a lot of issues there. I'd also bring up the point that, why are we, like, the sea level rise, it's so late in the process that we didn't, like, deal with that in the beginning, because that seems to be, like Judith was asking the questions, like, you need that answer to a lot of your equations, and it seems like that's still going to be way off and there in the future, because you have no idea what the Coastal Commission's going to rule. And that, you know, brings up another thing that I've written, Section 302.70 and 302.57 of the Coastal Act. You know, that, those are pretty important things, dealing with the building heights, and also sea level rise. The sea level rise is a pretty new addition to the Coastal Commission Act. I don't hear any, like, conversations about that, so that should have been dealt with a while back. And the other element is sort of like, we act like, you know, when the gateway is approved, that all this development's going to happen, and my question is, why isn't the developing happening right now? I mean, basically, why aren't you inviting the developers as for a session, and asking why they're not developing? And I got a taste for this back in December, that I wasn't thinking it from the Dan Co speech, and it's basically, you can do three, four-story buildings right now, and there's no problem. You're pro-development here, you're pro-development in the city council, you're pro-development in the leaders, there's nobody complaining about it, so why isn't there construction going on right at this moment?
Thank you for your comments.
Hi there, my name is Alex Bauton. I just wanted to agree as well, that I feel the environmental impacts of what's going to happen in the gateway zone needs to be a higher priority and dealt with sooner. I also agree with one of the planning commissioners here, that the time limit you have now, it's going to be difficult to cover all the topics, and so you might want to very rapidly consider having more meetings, if time allows. I understand everyone has lives outside of this volunteer position, but, you know, if you're going to cover everything, you need to get a lot of time to do that. With regards to getting packets from the staff for the council, so they can have pre-worked, you know, proposals done, I would like to see those packets also sent to the public, so they can have plenty of time to come prepared to a council and planning commission meetings, to weigh in, in a succinct manner, and get their ideas presented succinctly. With regards to when someone makes a proposal, I think I saw up there that making a counterproposal, you're given the same amount of time as a proposal. I would recommend allowing people to have more time than that, because formulating your thought in response to something that's just brought to your attention, you know, you're probably going to need more time. So, I would definitely highly suggest allowing more time for people to have those counterproposals. Yeah, I think that's everything, thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Patricia Companica, I will try my best not to make this snarky. So, oh, first I wanted to just put, you know, shout out to Julie, and thank her for all her time. I know I get a little bit nervous up here, and it was just really wonderful to see such a kind and caring and welcoming face up there, and so I usually just locked eyes with her and got myself through it. But anyways, so thank you. And anyways, I, what I heard at the last city council meeting from council member Meredith Matthews, was her asking more of a sample of Form-Based Codes, so that the community members could kind of better understand them, what a Form-Based Code was. She, they were, her and Sarah, were kind of concerned that maybe the community didn't understand what a Form-Based Code was, and so they were asking for a sample, not for all the Form-Based Codes to be finalized by that date. There's also, there is no vote between the three of them that were up there on the dais at the time. So, and I also think, you know, just giving more time to your discussions, I think, would be crucial in this process. I know there's a lot of misconceptions out there, and I think full, healthy, robust discussions are very healthy and very necessary for this process. There's a lot of things that we really need to go through, and I think there's a lot of things that are actually misinterpreted or misunderstood, some concerns of the community, and maybe concerns about, from you. And so if you didn't limit that time, it would really be able to kind of clarify those misconceptions. Or, like, for example, Commissioner Davies thinking that the community thinks that the bicycle path will be removed, we don't think it's going to be removed, we just think it's going to be jeopardized. And actually, the top portion of it will be removed, that's what it's proposed with that going through, so, and relocated. But I think a parking lot is more appropriate title, because, you know, we're trying to eliminate parking from the city limits, so there's not much room. It doesn't sound like there's going to be much room in this bicycle rack, and, you know, it seems that everything else, if there's not enough room to put it in the bicycle rack, will be unsecured, and we all know what happens to bicycles in the city of Arcata, when you don't secure them, and they're not locked up. So anyways, it's a little bit of what I wanted to say, and I don't know if staff's going to be limited on time as well, but anyways, that's some of my concerns, thanks.
Thank you for your comments.
James Becker, I am ceding my time to Fred Weiss, thank you.
Thank you, James.
Good evening, I'm Fred Weiss, to echo what Commissioner Mayor said, I find that I can get four times more set in six minutes than I can in three minutes. Three minutes is very difficult for me. The, first, I want to, I appreciate the thought and work and clarity that went into these guidelines, there's a lot of work there, I feel there's a lot of good stuff, and we can move forward. There are things that I think we just have to try, see how they work, and modify accordingly. On the proposed schedule of topics and dates, implies that anything that is not on the schedule is considered to have already been reviewed and completed, which I think is not true. Personally, I cannot possibly imagine the gateway plan, the general plan, the creation, direction to Ben Noble, creation of the Form-Based Code, and review of the Form-Based Code to be accomplished in eight meetings. You've scheduled two meetings for review of the Form-Based Code, I think review of Form-Based Code could go on for months, and the creation of a good Form-Based Code. I think the goal here is just to create a interim general plan and interim gateway plan, but you can confirm that if you want, just to get it done and get something going. There's the item on the, tonight's agenda, consider recommendation to the city council of the general plan update. I will voice, as I did last year, strong, strong objections to having dissimilar agenda items on a similar agenda topic. This is, lists as a single agenda item, this is, should be two items with two public comments, as it is, we're not going to probably get to the land use element. This has been ruled on by the courts, very clearly, they should be separate. The, in terms of the, what the city council wanted, as Patricia mentioned, Meredith, excuse me, council member Matthews, has expressed that if there is an existing Form-Based Code, it will give something that the public can look at and comment on. It's always easier to comment on something that exists, right now, it's very amorphous. I agree with that, and I propose anything to get this Form-Based Code in its draft form out to the commission and the public. It was said that they formally voted on this, my memory is that there was not a vote. At the same time, I agree with what's been said, that if there had been five people voting, it wouldn't have changed anything. At the same, and, I'll say at the same time, the dates are 100% unreasonable, but I do, you know, want to move forward. The, the schedule of dates on the document that David presented to the city council was implied that that document came from the planning commission, which is not true. It was a distillation, and then the dates were added, but it was said to have come from the planning commission. Normally, in development of Form-Based Code, and I've talked to, discussed this with Ben Noble at one of the breakout rooms, the commission gives direction to the consultant, and he develops a Form-Based Code that's based upon the direction that's given. What we're doing here is a little different, and I hope, I'm sure it'll work out, but it's different in that he's going to give something to you with very little direction at this point. And the prime example that came up in the first iteration that we saw, was that case where he had a zero-foot setback on a potential five-story vertical wall. I know that will be changed, but that's an example, lots, there are going to be lots of things in this draft that will need to be changed, I think. The, in terms of alternatives in the ER, as Commissioner Mayor mentioned, I'll bring up again, that the Transportation Safety Committee has asked for alternatives to the couplet for over a year, and there's not been an alternative, but I'm sure that by the time the ER comes around, there will be. I'll mention, in terms of the material that is passed to the commission and the assembling of the priorities, the Brown Act requires by law, that material that is supplied to the majority of the commission be available to the public at the same time and in the same fashion. So I suggest a possibly a webpage in the city, that essentially, every document that you receive just gets posted on that webpage. That way, that is both compliant, and it gives the public something to look for, as has been said here. The, the example that was given about the process involved Commissioner Simmons' idea of the high-density zoning, I wrote an article about this. At the end of the, that David said that would be put on as an implementation measure, which I don't know what an implementation measure is. That article has gotten 197 views, got 150 views in one week. Let's see, I don't like the word bike rack, the phrase. Oh, the, you know, the 80/20 rule, or 90/10 rule, that the main problems are caused by 10% of the items? Do the easy ones first, you'll be in agreement, consensus on all the easy ones, you know, with eight or 10 or 15 items on an element, and then, then get to the ones that are more difficult. I have other ideas, too, but I hope this has been good, I appreciate your comments, thanks.
Thanks for your comments, Fred.
Hi, my name is Kevin Gibbs, I'm a landowner in the city of Arcata, and I'm here based on a mailer that I received last week, discussing areas of Arcata that are being rezoned, from their current zoning to new zonings, and was under the implication with that mailer, that that would be discussed further at this meeting, or in more detail. So, I know that my time is no important than anyone else's, and I value yours, and I appreciate you guys being here, however, I don't feel like that subject got touched upon at all. And so, in saying that, I'm wondering if there will be a meeting dedicated to those topics, where, you know, like, it's public comment time, but I don't feel like I have anything to comment on, other than commenting on what I didn't. to comment on other than commenting on what I didn't get to hear tonight. And so I guess that's what I would say. Thank you.
Thank you. We, just to clarify, we did touch on that at the very beginning of the meeting, that we were unlikely to get to that this evening, but David, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, I just want to apologize because you sat here for a very long time and listened to us talk about stuff that you have absolutely not a care about, I'm sure. But I do want to extend the offer that you reach out to us. Dilo, do you have a card? You can reach out to Dilo and...
I'd love to.
Okay, fantastic, and we can talk more about your particular situation. Anybody else who received one of those mailers out in the, you know, the viewing audience or in the audience tonight, I encourage you to do the same thing and reach out to us. We'd like to talk to you about, you know, what the proposed changes are that the planning commission's been reviewing so that you have a good understanding before you come to the meeting, and, you know, can speak intelligently to what your concerns or what your desires are. So, again, I'm sorry you sat through this lengthy discussion, and if you come tomorrow, I'll buy you a cup of coffee for it.
Yeah, no problem.
Go ahead, Judith.
Excuse me, would you come back, please?
Okay. I was going to...
Okay. Because this was agendized and because the public was told that this would be an opportunity to address these issues, I think we should give you an opportunity for substantive input tonight rather than asking you to come back. And I think we are obliged to do that.
Yeah, I'm sorry that I'm not totally prepared. I don't know what substantance, or substantive input I would have. My hope was to come and kind of hear what the proposals were, the basis for the decisions about what areas were being rezoned to what. I did speak with Dilo earlier this week. I received the mailer, went online, went to the website, looked at the maps, you know, and like I said, you know, talked to her about a specific instance related to my property, which was marked incorrectly on the map, and I don't think it's the biggest deal. It's really preliminary map, and I understand it's the beginning of the process, but I would have to agree with this gentleman, and I didn't catch his name, that a website, something to where, you know, we could go and see, you know, these processes and what exactly is happening. So honestly, I mean, my comments are going to come after I hear exactly, you know, what was the basis for these decisions, and then how is this actually going to affect the investment that I've made in the city of Arcata going forward?
Yeah, thank you, and we all appreciate your involvement and apologize for the, just workings of bureaucracy, we just didn't get that this evening. Yeah. David, do we have any commenters online?
We do. Go ahead, Lisa.
Good evening, commissioners. Lisa Brown. The General Plan 2020 was developed under a very robust process that took three or four years. Several consultants and numerous citizen committees or task force who worked on developing direction and language for the plan on chapters aligned with their interests. In addition to this, there were vast opportunities for public engagement beyond the committees, both in the chambers and throughout the community. I understand and accept the process of taking this very excellent 2020 plan as a strong framework for the new update, and I welcome a more effective method for the process of decision-making and information dissemination. What I would take issue with is a process or method that stymies public input and/or commission deliberations resulting in a less than adequate result. So hopefully, this does not end up being that. And in saying that, on my email that I sent to you this evening, as I was rushing to get it in, I made a mistake on the actual Cross Streets. So if you did receive that, it is on 17th and Q, so please make note of that, on the north end of 17th Street. The two parcels or one parcel that I am concerned about. So, thank you, and I also apologize for running through David last time. I had turned off my volume and couldn't hear. Thank you.
Thanks, you, thank you for your comments.
Go ahead, Sheri.
Hi, good evening. The planning commissioners have committed to ruthless efficiency in the next few months. We should expect that staff be just as efficient, and specifically, this is regarding the draft Gateway Plan Other Considerations spreadsheet. Those considerations that don't comport to the plan as it is currently written. The Transportation Safety Committee did not recommend for L Street maintaining the current configuration and removing the K and L Street couplet from figures only. They recommended a linear park and improving K Street for greater safety. This error has been brought to staff attention some time ago, but the spreadsheet still has not been corrected. The failure to make this correction has led to concern from committee members and perpetuates the public's perception that input that doesn't conform to the draft plan as written will be disregarded. So please, ruthless efficiency on all sides. Also, I fully support our extremely knowledgeable planning commissioners taking the time needed to deliberate on the consequential issues being discussed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
Chair, before you close on that, do you mind if I just address the Transportation Safety Committee's recommendation? I had an opportunity to speak with them at the meeting, I'd like the opportunity to speak to you.
Please.
So the Transportation Safety Committee did raise this issue. It's been brought up by a couple of different public members, that the, the language that's used in the table that staff put together doesn't exactly match the language that was addressed by the commission. When I spoke to the Transportation Safety Committee, I, and the issue was raised there, I had an opportunity to address them on this matter, and I informed them that I would go back and look at what was written in each of these different tables. It was my impression and understanding that because we had used a table that was language verbatim from the Gateway Plan when we did this exercise with them, and then wrote down exactly what they said, and then they approved the language in that table, that we had extracted that language verbatim and put it into the new table of issues that weren't incorporated because their recommendation to remove reference to L Street being a couplet and to not transform it into, you know, traffic and to, you know, enhance it, all of those things are true. They did say those things. But we paraphrased in that second, in that second spreadsheet where we were identifying the main themes that we were hearing from the public, from, you know, various commissions of items that weren't incorporated. We have a discussion coming up with the Transportation Safety Committee at their next meeting to do a detailed review of the circulation element, excuse me. And at that same time, I've asked the chair to review the language and my interpretation of the language. I fully acknowledge that the words are not exactly the same, but that it conveys the type of information that that table is intended to convey. We will be asking the Transportation Safety Committee if they want to take it up again and have another, you know, crack at it, and if they want to have any other, you know, communication directly to the, to the decision-making bodies or to the planning commission. So I recognize people's impatience with, you know, the process, but we, we have to track these things in a way that, you know, that does reflect the public trust. It would be inappropriate, now that this issue is raised by, you know, a few members of the public, for us to go and start changing things without confirming and verifying from those decision-makers that they in fact want it to be changed. And so I do understand, you know, how this can be viewed as, you know, a breach of public trust, that, you know, this issue's been raised multiple times and hasn't been addressed. In fact, we are trying to honor the public process in a really detailed and fastidious way that allows for full transparency about the actions that were taken and the measures that we're taking to try and resolve those actions, if action, if resolution is required.
Thank you for that clarification.
Can I just ask when that transportation meeting is going to be? What time and what day?
Yeah, we'll look it up. I don't want to give you the wrong information.
Thank you.
Judith?
Yeah, given that this has come up several times, I know the typical protocol here is for committees to communicate with us through you. I would really like to ask the Transportation Safety Committee to address their comments directly to us, either in the form of comments which we will see as they make them, or by sending their chair or some other designee to address us during our planning commission meeting when we're reviewing the circulation element and the, and the gateway plan. We've, we've had several instances where, in, in this unique case, going through staff in order to get us the information that the Transportation Safety Committee apparently wanted us to know about has not worked. And so I would like to hear directly from them, either in writing, in person, or both.
I have a question, comment on that?
Go ahead, Dan.
Not to go into deliberations, but would that then be the case for all committee communications? I mean, it feels odd to me to select them out just because there's some discrepancy.
I, I'd like...
It's quite a change in protocol.
Yeah, it, it is a unique situation because it's been addressed again and again, and it hasn't really been resolved. It does make sense to go through staff when there's a sense that that is working. In this case, I think there's a sense that it hasn't worked, and the best way to make sure that we know what committees want us to know may be for them to tell us, and that could be then transmitted to us through staff, but ideally without the paraphrasing.
Okay, I'd like to propose that we wait to see the resolution of the communication between staff and the Transportation Safety Committee before we decide how we want further updates from them.
Can I just say something else? We, we had the circulation element on our agenda today. We do have it in advance now. By the time we get around to discussing it, the Transportation Safety Committee will have seen it and will have an opportunity to provide us directly with their input. I'd like to see that direct input, and it would be useful as a practice to see the input of other committees on the elements most related to what they're doing as well. It may actually save staff some work. It might certainly make me more confident that I'm hearing what the committee wanted me to hear.
I wanted to point out a couple of resources as well. So the Transportation Safety Committee meets next on March 21st at 4:30. They meet in person. There are no hybrid meetings for Transportation Safety Committee, they meet in this room. The other thing I wanted to draw the commission's attention to is that on our SERP page, under the Engagement tab, where we are housing all of the information that is relevant to public engagement, including the items that were sent to you, the memo, and et cetera, we also have the section where we got the recommendations for the committee on the Gateway Area Plan. Each of those PDFs is located here. Will you open the Transportation Safety Committee one? If you want to go in and review the Transportation Safety Committee's verbatim, as adopted, comments, they're here. If you could scroll down to the L Street comment, that'd be great. And, you know, you can review those for yourself as planning commissioners. If you'd like, we can put links to these in your staff reports if you find links, you know, useful. There are also recordings of the meetings if you wish to go and listen to the discussions and deliberations and get that rich of a context for these. There's no way that you're going to be able to house and contain all of the bits of data that are surrounding this work in each of your individual heads. The process is designed so that you can receive these recommendations and then, you know, make your decisions. Certainly, if you want to schedule, you know, additional meetings with, you know, with these chairs and ask them directly, you know, I'd, you know, suggest that that process will add additional time and energy both to the commission and the staff. That's not a, you know, a time savings matter, and, you know, certainly, we are, you know, producing this information to be 100% transparent. I won't say that, you know, we haven't made mistakes, but I will say that where we've made errors, they're not intentional to deceive the public. All of the information is available for everyone on these websites.
Go ahead, Dan.
Yeah, thank you, and what would be Brown Act considerations of commissioners attending a meeting like this?
Yeah, it's, it's not recommended, that a body that's being recommended by another body that you attend those, and we can have, you know, additional discussions about that. I'll, I'll save the time now, but it's highly discouraged.
Thank you.
Okay, I'd like to, we'll move to correspondence and communications. Do we have any correspondence from planning commission members?
Excuse me, what about the rest of our agenda?
I think we're...
Do you want to take a poll of the, are you referring to the, the land use element, circulation element, the vision?
I'm referring at least to the land use element and vision, which obviously the land use element has been on our agenda repeatedly. We have not gotten to discuss crucial aspects of it, and we haven't discussed the vision statements either. In preparation for this meeting, some of us have spent a great deal of time preparing detailed material, and if we're putting it off to our next meeting, it appears that our next meeting is taken up with other matters. So that would then put it off to the April 11th meeting? Is that correct? Over five months from when we first addressed this in our agenda.
Yeah, I think we don't have a choice but to put it off to our next meeting.
Yeah, I know this, you know, this meeting was absorbed primarily with the investment in process, and I, you know, I think it was an invaluable investment. I think it'll, you know, this time, we'll, we'll reap the benefits of, you know, efficient discussions in the future. You know, it's, it's really up to the commission if you want to continue.
I just think at this time of night, we're at the point where things start to be less productive, and my proposal is that we carry this forward to the next available meeting for this discussion.
I agree, and I would support any kind of polling that would try to find some more slots to replace the 518, or 318 meeting, you know. I feel like we need to show up a little more often. I saw in Commissioner Lehman's notes that he's very open to it. I don't know, it doesn't feel like something we can tackle right now, but perhaps through...
We can do some doodle polling to, to find some times to, to replace that lost time. Yeah, we'll, we'll do that, and then we'll, we'll schedule those timeframes and notice those meetings separately.
Okay, I think that sounds good. Matt?
I was gonna, are we voting on that?
Just take your input.
I think we should be done tonight, and I definitely think we should have a few more meetings.
Okay, given that, we'll move now to correspondence. Any correspondence from planning commission members? If not, do we have any correspondence from staff?
I think we're talking... I think we're talked out.
Okay. There being no further business, this meeting is adjourned.